to be in here. Okay, if fire marshal has approved you, you can stay. If not, you must leave. Okay, it is now 7:12. We're going to go ahead and start the city council meeting. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Guzman.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
Felix.
Present.
Newsome.
Present.
Turner.
Present.
Donaworth.
Present.
Corian.
Present.
Hayes.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, the invocation will be given by Deacon Gary Munda from Most Blessed Trinity Parish. Please come to the mic.
Oh, don't have to move. Okay, very good. Let us come together. Blessed are you, Lord God of mercy, who through your son gave us a marvelous example of charity and the great command of love for one another. Send down your blessings on these your servants, who so generously devote themselves to helping others when they are called on in times of need. Let them faithfully serve you and end in their neighbor. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Where charity and love are found, there is God. The love of Christ has gathered us together into one. Let us rejoice and be glad in him. Let us fear and love the living God and love each other from the depths of our heart. Therefore, when we are together, let us take heed not to be divided in mind. Let there be an end to bitterness and quarreling, an end to strife, and to our midst be Christ our God. And in company with the blessed may we see your face in glory, God, pure and unbound joy, forever and ever. Amen.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Welcome, everyone, to the May 6, 2024 city council meeting. Again, I want to remind people that our agendas go online on the Friday before the meetings. Please look and see everything that's on there for vote tonight. And again, I welcome you. We're already in May, and thanks for being here this evening. Before I get started, I want to introduce two new staff members, and if they could please rise. For our dispatch, we have a new dispatch director, and it's Mr. Tom Perfect, standing right there for you.
Welcome aboard.
And as of today, we have a new HR director, Daphne Hannah Brooks.
Hello, Daphne. Welcome aboard.
Some general comments. Today is Holocaust Remembrance Day, and it runs from last evening to the evening at sundown, or this evening at sundown. The day is a day of solemn reflection and commemoration honoring the 6 million Jewish people who perished in the Holocaust, along with millions of others. May is ALS Awareness Month. This month is a time to shine a light on ALS and its heartbreaking impact. It's an opportunity to raise awareness, support those affected, and advance research towards a cure for this devastating disease. May is also Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, celebrating these diverse contributions. It's a time to recognize their resilience, achievements, and integral role in shaping our society. Through reflection and celebration, we embrace unity, diversity, and spirit of inclusion. May is also Mental Health Awareness Month, and it's dedicated to raising awareness and de-stigmatizing conversations around mental health. It's time for education, support, advocacy, and emphasizing the importance of mental well-being for all. Let's unite to break down barriers, offer compassion, and promote mental health resources and support networks. The Waukegan Fire Department is looking for new hires. Applicants must be at least 20 years old and less than 35 years old at the time of the written exam. For more information, you can contact the Fire Department. They're also hosting two optional orientation sessions for interested applicants at the Waukegan Fire Department Station 5, located at 3221 North Green Bay Road on May 22, and again on June 1. Applications open on June 3. I'm going to be honest, we swear on a new firefighter today. I'm a little biased, but I will tell you, I think we have one of the best fire departments in the country, let alone Lake County. So I'm just going to say that. But I will say I'm a little biased. But they are under the leadership of Chief Paser and Deputy Chief Stickles, and we thank them for their leadership all of the time. We had an excellent Earth Week in Waukegan, with residents from all nine vibrant wards taking advantage of dumpster collection sites and participating in cleanups all over the city. I believe we had 56 tons of garbage that we collected through the dumpsters. That is a record and amazing. But as a reminder, we ask you to keep your property tidy. Please do your spring cleanups, get garbage that's accumulated on your property off of it. And again, I want to remind people that our lawn height is no more than eight inches before it needs to be cut, and you could be cited for that. On Monday, May 29, is the city of Waukegan's Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony. The parade will start at the intersection of Genesee and Washington and proceed up to Washington to Veterans Memorial Plaza on the southwest side of the intersection of Washington and West Streets. Everyone is welcome and invited. If your organization wants to participate in the parade, call 847-599-2525. Waukegan Friends is also hosting the Waukegan Pride Parade and Festival on Saturday, June 1. The parade is from 1 to 3, and the festival is from 2 to 7. More information can be found at waukeganfriends.org or by calling 847-533-0091. And I'm also going to bring up, at this time, is Itzel here? Itzel, come on out to the microphone. Itzel has done, and her team has done an incredible job processing all the liquor license renewals. And I'm going to have her update you on how many we processed and what it was like this year. Go ahead, Itzel.
Good evening, Alderman. So my name is Itzel Morales, and I am part of the finance team. I am in the first floor, and I'm the supervisor for accounts receivable and the water department. In March of 2023, we started the renewal season for liquor licensing for 163 businesses. The due date for those renewals was April 15. As the ordinance states, the liquor businesses need to have an application and their fees paid by that date. We do still have some applications open, but by the end of April, which was April 30, and the deadline for their last year's license expiration date, we had 98% of the businesses reach out for their renewals. That is the highest percentage that our office has had in the last two years. It's by far has exceeded the numbers. In participation, we have had a best turnaround time for the renewals. We've had a lot of renewal leases, a lot of BAC certifications that have to be updated for employees and management team. The businesses have to let us know who their current management team are, including who their presidents, boards, or their in-person management is. And it is information that is critical for the businesses to give to the city of Waukegan. Our office was able to conclude this renewal season, well, we're still in the last few, right, but we were able to do the communication via email, via phone, and in person at the front counter. And we couldn't have done it without the support of the businesses. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you, Itzel. Again, I want to say what a team they've been. You know, we've had little struggles along the way of people understanding exactly what they need to bring, but they were able to get it on, you know, get it through to the businesses, what they needed to come with, and great job. Last, I want to thank the members of the city council for their work in passing the budget at the last city council meeting. We were here, I think, until midnight, somewhere in there, but it was done. And again, it was a balanced budget. We did not increase property taxes. We kept the levy the same. And we also are investing in the police force, public safety, and nearly $40 million in infrastructure for the community. I think it's 39.4, to be exact. Again, I want to thank all the council for their support, because if we don't work together, we can't accomplish what we need to for this city. So thank you, everyone. At that, Madam Clerk, I'll turn it over to you for resolutions, proclamations, and presentations. Well, we're going to go ahead and do three Pride Awards for students for their art project. You want to go ahead and talk about it?
Yes, I'm going to talk about that. Thank you so much. We have a, Waukegan City of Progress does hereby present to Steve Ferrado this Waukegan Proud Award in recognition of your first-place finish in the annual Congressional Art Competition for the 10th Congressional District for your art titled "Celebrating the Cultural Mosaic of America" that will be displayed in the U.S. Capitol Building in Washington, D.C., presented today, May 6, 2024. Additionally, we have Maria Islas Fonseca this Waukegan Proud Award in recognition of your second-place finish in the annual Congressional Art Competition for the 10th Congressional District for your art titled "Lilith." This will be displayed in the U.S. Capitol Building in Washington, D.C., presented May 6, 2024. The last Waukegan Proud Award is presented to Ishanti Brown in recognition of your third-place finish in the annual Congressional Art Competition for the 10th Congressional District for your art titled "American Sign Language Connected" that will be displayed in the U.S. Capitol Building in Washington, D.C., presented on May 6, 2024. May we have Steve Ferrado, Maria Islas Fonseca, and Ishanti Brown come up.
Can you come down to the front? Well, for those of you who don't know, you often hear me brag about the artists that we have in our community, and these are three amazing students. So we're going to go ahead. We want to make sure our city knows who they are. And you've got a big crowd tonight. Come ahead. Okay, we're going to go ahead, and we're going to do pictures so that you have your parents so proud. And then if your parents want to come up also, they're more than welcome to come. This is your sign. Again, I like to take time to celebrate the amazing students that we have in our city. You know, we forget sometimes all the great work our youth does, and so thank you so much. And again, amazing artists. I think some of you may have seen it in the newspaper before, but if you haven't, they were recognized, I think it's been, was it two weeks ago it was in the newspaper, or a week ago? About a week, yeah. So thank you.
All right, ma'am, we're going to go continue with your proclamations. We have a proclamation, "May is Historic Preservation Month." Whereas historic preservation encourages community reinvestment, saving resources, and promoting socially, culturally, and historically rich communities, historic preservation fosters a culture of reuse and maximizes the life cycle of all resources through conservation. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering economic development and local pride, maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas Waukegan has recognized the importance of historic preservation with the establishment of a historic preservation program by the ordinance of number 1-0-144 on December 17, 2001. And whereas to heighten the awareness of historic preservation, the historic preservation program has been incorporated under the purview of the Historic Preservation Commission, which was established in 2003. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals and organizations in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas Historic Preservation Month, co-sponsored by the city of Waukegan, the Waukegan Historical Society, and the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and Waukegan's Historic Preservation Commission calls on residents of Waukegan to identify places, properties, and structures important to Waukegan's history and worth of landmarking. And whereas the Waukegan Historic Preservation Commission will be recognizing Waukegan's historically significant properties at upcoming city council meetings starting on Monday, May 20, in order to bring awareness to the cultural importance of Waukegan's historic resources and encourage preservation as a whole. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the city council proclaim May 2024 as Historic Preservation Month in Waukegan, and calls upon the people of Waukegan to join their fellow residents in recognizing and participating in this special observance through many activities that are happening in our community, adopted the 6th of May, 2024.
Can I have Sam Green? Okay. Okay. Okay, so we'll just read those into the record. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. The next one is proclamation, 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks' Week, May 5 through the 11, 2024. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize a complement of the office of the professional municipal clerk. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the city council of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5 through 11, 2024, as Professional Municipal Clerks' Week. Be further resolved that the city of Waukegan extends appreciation to our professional municipal clerks, city clerk Janice Kilkelly, and deputy city clerk David A. Patterson, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent, adopted the 6th of May, 2024.
Again, I want to make sure that we thank both Clerk Kilkelly and Deputy Clerk David Patterson. Yep. Come on, Natalie. The women. I'll say thank you, ladies, for what you do. Since David's not here, I'll just keep it ladies tonight, but thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. I hope you're going to post that in your office, right? Our next proclamation for economic development, we will read, but we will not have anybody here receiving tonight.
Proclamation, Economic Development Week in Waukegan, May 6 through May 10, 2024. Whereas more than 100,000 economic development or related professionals worldwide are committed to creating, retaining, and expanding top-tier opportunities that facilitate long-term equitable community growth. And whereas the economic development profession cultivates thriving neighborhoods, champions sustainability and resiliency, boosts economic prosperity, and enhances the quality of life, and builds robust tax bases. And whereas economic development professionals operate throughout diverse economic environments, including rural, suburban, and urban settings, local, state, provincial, and national governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, institutions of higher education, among many similar organizations and associations. And whereas economic development professionals serve as stewards, bridging connections between community stakeholders, such as residents, business leaders, elected officials, industry executives, and educational administrations, to collaborate in promoting job creation, community investment, infrastructure advancements, and an optimistic future. And whereas economic developers contribute to the betterment and progress of Waukegan within the county of Lake. And whereas, since 1926, the International Economic Development Council has been a leader and driving force in advancing economic development initiatives with a steadfast commitment to fostering growth and prosperity in communities of all sizes worldwide through equity, inclusion, sustainability, resilience, and innovation. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the city council proclaim the week of May 6 through May 10, 2024, as Economic Development Week in Waukegan, Illinois. And remind everyone of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding opportunities, improves lives, and launches society forward, adopted the 6th of May, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is Police Recognition Week, and we will have our Chief Navarro come up and accept that in a couple of minutes. We'll read it first, and then we'll have you accept it.
Proclamation, Police Recognition Week in Waukegan, May 12 through May 18, 2024. Whereas Police Week in America was created to honor and recognize the sacrifice and contributions made by police officers and communities, both large and small. And whereas community will always appreciate and commend the risks police officers take every day to ensure our community's laws are properly enforced and that public safety is ensured. And whereas, now more than ever, the community also appreciates and encourages the community involvement facilitated by our police officers to better serve and instill mutual trust, camaraderie, and positive relationships among our increasingly diverse population in the city of Waukegan. Whereas police engage with and serve the public in the most varied and wide-ranging manner, and their efforts do not go unnoticed. And now therefore be it resolved, Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the city council proclaim May 12 through May 18, 2024, as Police Recognition Week in the city of Waukegan, Illinois, and encourage all residents to join the city in acknowledgement of the service, sacrifices, and efforts that the Waukegan Police Department makes to best serve the community. And be it further resolved that city of Waukegan and the Waukegan Police Department invite elected officials, community leaders, and members of the public to the Lake County Police Memorial Service that will honor all police officers who have fallen in the line of duty that will be held on Friday, May 10, at 12:00 p.m. at Lincoln Plaza at 18 North County Street in downtown Waukegan, Illinois, adopted the 6th of May, 2024.
Come up. And for those of you who don't remember or haven't been to it before, again, this Friday at noon over here at the Lincoln Memorial, we will have a service, and it will not just be our police, it'll be all of Lake County's police there. And we welcome everybody to come, and please participate, and it's a great service, and I welcome all of you to come. Here you go, chief.
Okay, we're not done yet. Proclamation, Aproxia Awareness Day in Waukegan, May 14, 2024. Whereas childhood apaxia of speech is a challenging speech disorder that affects nearly 1 in 1,000 children and causes children to have significant difficulty learning to speak, and it is among the most severe speech deficits in children. And whereas the act of learning to speak comes effortlessly to most children, those with apaxia require early, appropriate, and intensive speech therapy, often for many years, to learn to speak. Without appropriate speech therapy intervention, children with apaxia will give diminished communication skills. And whereas that such primary and secondary impacts diminish future independence and employment opportunities, and challenge their ability to become productive, contributing citizens if not resolved or improved. And whereas public awareness about childhood apaxia of speech in Waukegan, Illinois is essential for families of children with childhood apaxia of speech, and the professionals who support them to best advocate for needed services for children learning to use their own voice. And whereas our highest respect goes to children with childhood apaxia of speech and to their families for their effort, determination, and resilience in the face of obstacles. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the city council of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 14, 2024, as Aproxia Awareness Day in the city of Waukegan, adopted the 6th day of May, 2024.
Is anyone here from, oh, perfect. Come on up. Alderman Donaworth, do you want to come down?
Sure.
I promise we're not scary.
Can you say hi?
Come on, Alderman.
Smile. Photo time. One, two, three. One more. There it is.
We want to present all of you.
with 75% of these are fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas safety is essential for the full enjoyment of boating, and safe boating practices will result in the saving of many lives and in the avoidance of injuries and property damage. And whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error, poor judgment, and limited training, and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla 41-05, Division 41, District 9WR, which serves the Waukegan area, supports National Safe Boating Week in partnership with the U.S. Coast Guard and National Safe Boating Council, and provides boater safety education, which results in our waterways providing a relatively safe and almost accident-free environment. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim May 20th through May 26th, 2024, as National Safe Boating Week in Waukegan, and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating, adopted the 6th day of May, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I have everybody with the Coast Guard come up? Again, I want to remind people, we live on Lake Michigan. Please, please, understand boating safety. All our kids should know how to swim, but all of our people who have boats, please understand the importance of safety for us. For those seats that are vacated now, those that are standing on the side, if you'd like to fill those seats, you're more than welcome to. Our next agenda item is audience time, and since we have a large number of people here this evening, I'm going to propose that we limit audience time to 45 minutes, and then we'll do the business of the city, and then after Alderman time, we'll do the rest of audience time. Can I have a motion to amend the agenda to allow for a break in audience time after 45 minutes to allow for the completion of the business of the city?
Aye, so moved.
So moved.
Forty-five.
How many people are signed up?
Twenty-three.
Oh, 23, okay.
Twenty-three. Okay. So that's about halfway. Okay, do I have a first and a second?
Aye, so moved.
First.
Alderman Newsome. Second was Alderman Florian. Can I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk? Or all in favor is actually all we need. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So before we start audience time, I want to remind people that the rules of decorum, you get three minutes. We don't want you to shout over others, we want you to be respectful of each other. And, you know, please, we want to hear you speak, and we encourage you to stay this evening after Alderman time if you don't get heard as part of the first group. And again, we ask you, do not be threatening to anybody in the room, but please be respectful of each other, that's what we're here for. Okay, Madam Clerk, we will limit it to 45 minutes. You want to call people?
Yes, I'm going to set the two clocks. We have the 45 minutes going. I'm going to... We don't start yet. I'm going to say, you have three minutes. I'm going to call the first five people. Proceed to the east side of the room, line up, be ready to go. And here we go. The first one, of course, is going to be me. So Janet Kilkelley, Peggy Shapiro, John Goodman, Allison Molatsky, and Ron Salenstein. That's Peggy Shapiro, John Goodman, Allison Molatsky, Ron Salenstein. So here, I'm going to start. And I'm going to do it right from here for expediency. So, alderpersons. Alderpersons, I'm here to address the inequitable and noncompetitive compensation for the future elected city clerk. This inequity has developed over time and more acute since the last reset by the City Council in 2012. Elected alderpersons and treasurer are officeholders serving part-time while maintaining their primary full-time vocations. The city clerk is a full-time position similar to other full-time, non-union city employees, whose city salary is their primary source of income. At the last council meeting, Chief of Staff stated that the recent salary survey showed city of Waukegan non-union employee salaries were 30% below market. No surprise that city non-union salaries need to be adjusted. Inflation rates for '21 through '23, per the federal government, total 17.8%. The city clerk is a full-time elected administrative position. A department head with three direct staff executing statutory requirements performs the same duties expected of all department heads at the city of Waukegan. From the salary list presented at the last council meeting, the lowest-paid department head's salary is $34,000 higher than the city clerk's salary, or 30% less of the next lowest-paid department head. Your job is to determine an equitable pay range for the future elected city clerk. Your refusal to do so is a terrible reflection of this board and reeks of blatant political partisanship. You increase aldermanic pay by 22.7% and double the stipend for 2027, yet you rescinded the far less generous future city clerk pay scheduled to start in 2025. The salary of the mayor, the only other full-time elected employee of the city, has not increased since 2012. If the current mayor's intent is to de-incentivize the office by deflating the salary, she is doing a disservice to the community and future officeholders. However, I'm not here on behalf of the mayor's office, I'm here to advocate for the office of the city clerk, a full-time elected city administrator and department head. How do you attract and retain good representatives to step up and represent our community of 90,000 if you continue to advocate underpaying full-time elected representatives? Last year, I provided comparables and even gave a reasonable base for you to consider for whoever is the next city clerk. My request, Alderman, is that you address and rectify this base pay inequity by amending the motion on the floor to the original base salary request of $94,000. A 16% increase over the 2012 salary, half of the 30% shortfall Chief of Staff spoke of, 6% less than the increase you granted yourselves, and 1.8% less than the inflation rate of 17.8% for the period '21 through '23. By amending the motion on the floor to restore the original salary request of $94,000, you are giving the future elected city clerk officeholders a modicum of the fairness, equity, and respect they are due.
Wow. Ms. Peggy Shapiro.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. Thank you, Mayor, for acknowledging that today is Holocaust Remembrance Day. I'm the child of two Holocaust survivors. My parents were first slave laborers when they were only 13 and 14 years old. I grew up with no aunts, uncles, or grandparents because 182 members of my family were murdered for the crime of being Jewish. And I am terrified that antisemitism that was unchecked then is running rampant now. It's not only in the form of hating the individual Jew, but it's hating the Jewish state. And today, you're going to hear from some people who are proposing something that will be very damaging to the Jewish community here in Waukegan and elsewhere. I heard what you were dealing with before, there are so many things in a city council. I never even knew how complex a bump in the road could be. And we're looking at a very complex situation in the Middle East. But the purpose of the Waukegan City Council is to deal with the firefighters and water safety, and that is within your scope. That's where your city council rules emanate. But it's not in your purview, it's not in your expertise to weigh in on world issues. So whatever is decided here, when people bring up a ceasefire resolution, it will have no bearing on a foreign conflict. Should a ceasefire resolution be brought up? It's not going to change U.S. foreign policy. It's not going to tell Hamas, oh, Waukegan voted for a ceasefire, let's stop shooting. It's not going to deter Israel from trying self-defense. But what will the calls for a ceasefire really do? We all want a ceasefire, we all want to end hostilities. But on October 7th, on October 6th, there was a ceasefire. On October 7th, Hamas terrorists conducted the bloodiest massacre of Jews since the Holocaust. Young women, women I knew, were tortured and gang raped. There are still over 130 hostages held, and nobody has known where they are. We want a ceasefire, but a ceasefire that leaves hostages in danger, in mortal danger, and that keeps a terror organization in control, that would be a victory to the terrorists and take us further away from peace. So should a ceasefire resolution be brought up? I urge you to vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Shapiro. Thank you. John Goodman. All right, whenever you go. Go ahead.
So, my name's John Goodman. I'm not Jewish, I'm not Palestinian, just an American guy. I've been in the military, I've been all over the world. I've seen antisemitism, I've seen Islamophobia. And a city council voting on a ceasefire for a conflict that has nothing to do with Waukegan is just going to stoke the fires of antisemitism and Islamophobia, both, on both sides. It doesn't do anything but virtue signal. If you guys need a pat on the back, no offense, I'll pat you on the back. I'll pat every one of you on the back, if you need it. But demanding a resolution for something that's not in purview, not in the focus of the Waukegan City Council will just end up enraging more people, on both sides, I'm sure. I've seen it. I've been down on the college campuses, I've been downtown, I've been all over the world, like I said. And hate's going to hate no matter where you add, they will. Just like you said, a speeder's going to speed down and hit the speed bump. People are going to hate if they don't have the love in their heart. But voting on something that can... is already a very tense situation is not going to help anyone. And I'd like to ask you not to do it. It's going to flame the hate, it's going to stoke more diverseness, it's going to... now's not the time. We need something to bring us together in Illinois, in Waukegan, in Chicago, in America. And this isn't it. We need something to not stoke the fire of hate, but to bring us together as one. And all the hate does is endanger residents in your community and other communities as well. And it was national news when Chicago voted for the resolution, but it didn't do anything. It was national news, but it was also a laughing stock. And it just fed the flames of hatred, again, throughout Illinois, throughout America, and probably throughout the world, I don't know. So, that's all I have for my time.
Thank you, sir. Allison Molatsky.
Hi. Well, I'm here because I have passionate feelings about what's happening in the Middle East now, and I have personal connections there, too. And I agree with the other speakers. I'm sorry to be taking your City of Waukegan time with an international issue, and that's not why you're here, that's not what you're meant to do. But again, we were informed that there's a campaign. There's ceasefire playbooks, where groups of people are going from city council to city council, again, stoking fires and bringing things that have nothing to do with city business. One of us has a playbook, I don't know if you... Okay. What else can I say? One other thing, too, is when I hear people, this is just a personal thing, when I hear people doubting that what happened on October 7th actually happened on October 7th, the Congress was shown videos taken by Hamas with pride at the joyful murder, beheadings, rape, all sorts of just awful crimes against people. The Congress has seen it, I don't have the stomach to see it, but I don't know how anybody could say that these things did not happen. I don't know what else to say, I'm just... If something does come up for the ceasefire, I ask you not to vote for it, and I won't take up more of your time.
Thank you. Ron Salenstein.
Before we continue, I want to remind the audience to please keep your comments to yourself, or you will be asked to leave.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm 75 years old. Not until the last few months have I experienced the overt antisemitism that is now rampant across this country, college campuses. Antisemitism is a cancer, and it must be eradicated. I'm here to prevent it from spreading to Waukegan. It risks Jewish safety at a time of dangerous antisemitism. FBI Director Christopher Wray warns antisemitism is reaching historic levels. Prior to the October 7th Hamas massacre, antisemitic cases of assault, harassment, and vandalism against Jews in the U.S. were at an historic high. Although only 2% of the U.S. population is Jewish, the FBI reported that over 50% of religiously motivated hate crimes were directed against Jews. That's a shocking number, and it is increased by 400% since October 7th. Jewish institutions, shops, and individuals are being attacked. Jewish students are fearful of going to classes and feel compelled to hide their identity. This is not America. The dramatic rise in antisemitism has the Jewish communities very much on edge in this part of the world. What it does, it divides the community, it does not unite us. And the purpose of the City Council is to not divide its community. A city council should focus on bringing different parts of the community together instead of taking hateful stances on a conflict which is halfway around the world. And what is deceiving about these resolutions? Well, they're very well orchestrated, well-funded events, and they're certainly not grassroots. Although the anti-Israel campaign tries to project an image of grassroots image, there is a centralized and well-coordinated scent of instructions. Please print out the ceasefire today and the care tool. That's a shocking number. And it's only, it has increased by 400% since October 7th. Jewish institutions, shops, and individuals are being attacked. Jewish students are fearful of going to classes and feel compelled to hide their identity. This is not America. The dramatic rise in antisemitism has the Jewish communities very much on edge in this part of the world. What it does, it divides the community, it does not unite us. And the purpose of the city council is to not divide its community. A city council should focus on bringing different parts of the community together instead of taking hateful stances on a conflict which is halfway around the world. And what is deceiving about these resolutions? Well, they're very well orchestrated, well-funded events, and they're certainly not grassroots. Although the anti-Israel campaign tries to project an image of grassroots image, there is a centralized and well-coordinated scent of instructions. Please print out the ceasefire today and the care toolkits. The city council may want to know what they are hearing is an international campaign that the speeches they are hearing have been written by that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. The next group of five, Sally Shulman, Rayon Edwards, Richard Shulman, Clyde McLemore, Iman Asar. That's Sally Shulman, Rayon Edwards, Richard Shulman, Clyde McLemore, Iman Asar.
First, let me thank you very much for allowing us to be here and express our thoughts. My name is Sally Shulman. I also am a child of survivors of the Holocaust. I have no aunts, no uncles, no grandparents, all perished in the Holocaust. I want to pick up on what Ron said about the city council may, may be wanting to know that what they're hearing, as Ron said, is a part of an international campaign, and that the speeches that they are hearing have been well, have been written by that campaign. We have their playbooks, which they copy and paste. And if you listen to some of their speeches, they are also copied and pasted in these There was a ceasefire on October 6th, until October 7th, a Jewish holiday. Hamas terrorists brutally murdered over 1,200 people in Israel, and in many cases tortured and raped their victims. Over 10,000 people have been wounded, 200,000 Israelis have been displaced from their homes, and over 11,500 rockets have been fired at Israeli homes and families since the war began. Hamas also took 250 people hostage on October 7th, and continues to hold nearly 130 of them in Gaza. Hamas leaders have promised to repeat the atrocities on October 7th over and over again until Israel is destroyed. We take them at their word. Hamas is a terrorist organization. Hamas has repeatedly broken all ceasefire agreements. Hamas has promised to repeat the atrocities of October 7th. Hamas has refused the most recent attempts at negotiating a ceasefire. Therefore, the ceasefire called for is unilateral, with Israel holding its fire and Hamas reloading its weaponry. It asks for half a fire to be put out while the other half rages. Hamas's deeply rooted antisemitic ideology, Hamas is extremism.
Thank you, Ms. Shulman. Rayon Edwards.
Good evening, council. Let's start off tonight, and I'm going to apologize to you, Mayor, for last council meeting. I said some things here that may have been inappropriate, right? But I want to say this to you. You left when I was speaking. You came in toward the end. I was blew off. I'm telling your staff, the whole city, that over 50 shots were shot downtown Waukegan, and somebody called 911, and 911 didn't answer, not once, but twice. I've said in this council on a million of times, and I've watched people come up here complaining, and I watched the mayor say, hey, director, go talk to that person. Nobody did that. I called your police the next day to ask what happened. Nobody answered, and nobody called me back. I called the mayor office the next day, Monday morning, nobody answered, and nobody, I mean, they answered, I left a message, but I got no call back. To you, that may have not been a lot, but to me, that was a whole lot. And then we stand up here, and we cite all of these numbers, and we talk about how safe this community is. I'm not sure where you live in that, honey, but where I'm at, it ain't too safe. And I say this to you guys all the time, all the time I come here and I say this, and we do nothing about it. An accident happened, and you need 12 squad cars for the accident. It's disgusting. And so I'm saying that to you. I'm glad we got a director now, and I hope we can do something better. I pray we do. When we dial 911, that simply means we need help as fast as you can get it. I want to say something to the people that got up here and spoke. I'm, I'm sorry the Holocaust happened. And I hear you guys talk about antisemitic, but y'all sitting up here calling a group of people terrorists. That's not okay. When we're talking about peace, that's not peace. And I hope this city council mind their business. That is not your job. And when y'all get involved, y'all cause more hate. I don't know what got to happen, but I want it to stop. Don't nobody deserve it. We got to stop calling each other terrorists. That's where we start. Start there, please. So whatever you guys do tonight, think about it. I understand, we want to shorten time up, and we want to get to the city business, but these people deserve a chance to speak, and they shouldn't have to sit here for hours to do so. You let that council go on, you let them speak so they can go home. This is what we elect you guys to do, and you only got two meetings out the month. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Shulman? Mrs. Shulman? Richard Shulman, go ahead.
Thank you very much for having me. Last gentleman did not need a microphone. I, I want to digress, again, talking about what's going on in the world, specifically overseas. We hear a lot of, we hear, we hear screaming demands for resolutions regarding the Israel-Hamas conflict, but not for any other conflicts, though the Geneva Academy monitors more than 110 current armed conflicts worldwide. Why do those demanding a ceasefire have no concern for the actions of the fighters in Somalia, Yemen, Egypt, Myanmar, or the 100 and other nine other war zones? Why not ask the Waukegan City Council to take up each of these conflicts at future meetings? Are the 800,000 Syrians murdered by Assad not a matter of concern? The Chinese government's incarcerating more than an estimated 1 million Turkish Muslims in interim camps? Without any legal process in interim camps, are they not worth, worthy of the attention of the Waukegan City Council? A greater question to consider is, why is the one conflict is the only one raising such concerns? Recently, there was also an incidence where the Pakistani government is evicting 1.2 million Afghans, for reasons best known to that country. We, if I may, if you look at the preamble of Hamas's charter, one of the provisions is, "We must attack every Jew on planet Earth. We must slaughter and kill them. Jews are the vilest and most despicable nation in history. Oh Allah, bring annihilation upon the Jews." These are hateful words for a people that want nothing but peace. In spite of what some people may think, the hand has been extended by Israel time after time for peace. We are looking for peace now, but more importantly, for the purpose of this council, this is an international concern. Whatever this council should decide to do is not going to have an impact, and as we heard the last gentleman speaking with some rather harsh words, it is only going to divide this community and this country. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Clyde McLemore.
I'm trying to understand, Clyde McLemore, Black Lives Matter Lake County. I'm trying to understand this council. Y'all just voted on a budget that does not balance. All the women voted and made a motion to amend the budget to mirror what the city got coming in. All the Guzman, you worried about $25,000 when the city is 6 million over budget. How can you give a raise to a director of planning and zoning what businesses came to Waukegan? The only new business under this administration is Planet 13. $150,000 a year? How many businesses have closed or been fined through y'all wacky ordinances? Let's just tell the truth. Everything this mayor has tried to do has failed. I said in your campaign office, after your first year, you locked down City Hall. Everybody have a gatekeeper, however, none of the city, none of the citizens of Waukegan can reach you. You lied about a balanced budget, you have three police chiefs since you've taken office, crime is worse than it ever been before. Overall, Mayor, you are a liar. You're a memulator. I thought with the last administration, but they, they weren't liars. Don't you, I, I had problems with the last administration, but they weren't liars. Don't you see your ship is sinking? Why is this city contracting a company out of Woodstock to mow lawns? $309,000, $309,500 for mowing lawns. Then you went, you got a contract with Atmont Foundation for the youth summer program. How much grass do you, are y'all expecting? All the people, out of all the businesses here in Waukegan, do you have to really contract outside of the county? Do your investigation to see what ties on that company. Its website says it does its service in McHenry County. To the people that speak, between 1501 and 1867, 13 million black people were stolen and brought to a land that wasn't theirs, okay? And we stand here still with redlining, segregation, getting killed, can't drive a car, can't walk across the street. You know what I'm saying? And then you go sit here and call these people who are business owners, who are big in our community because they're asking to be safe in their country? Y'all wrong. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Monsieur Iman Asar?
Good evening. My name is Alfredo Dean. I'm a faith-based community leader here in Waukegan for the past eight and a half years. Last week for me was quite a challenging week. I was returning from Princeton University with a clergy meeting with about 20 pastors, and as I was coming back home, I dropped my phone, and I was no longer able to call an Uber. So I had to get a taxi, and it cost twice the price, it was $112. Then, when I arrived home, there was a community program, so I drove, I started my car, and it wasn't working. My battery had died. And then I opened up the mail that same night, and I noticed there were four bank statements from various banks that said someone had opened up a credit card under my name and a bank account under my name. It was a pretty stressful day. Even the most stressful days for myself compares, it doesn't compare at all to what Palestinians have to go through every single day. We have food, we have water, we have human rights, we have dignity. They don't. Their homes are being bombed, their hospitals are being bombed, their universities are being bombed. They are starving to death, and we don't want to call a ceasefire. I heard of this two-year-old baby who tried to get treatment at a hospital, and the parents sent, they wanted to get treatment, and every time, they kept getting denied by the government, by the Israeli government. No, no, no. And finally, the baby died with a hole in her heart. This was before October 7th. So we talk about October 7th, but let's talk about October 6th, let's talk about October 5th, let's talk about October 4th, let's talk about October 9th. Raise your hand if you believe all people deserve the right to equal treatment regardless of race, religion, or national identity. Okay? According to Human Rights Watch, today Palestinians are born without civil rights. This is one of the root causes of the violence, not Hamas. Hamas was founded in 1987. We are not here to support Hamas. We're here to support these children and these innocent women who, who are being murdered. And we know it's wrong. It's wrong. How can there be peace without any freedom? Let me be clear. Advocating for the rights of the Palestinian people is not synonymous with denying the rights and the security of the Jewish people. In fact, numerous Jewish voices are also calling for justice and peace in Palestine, and their voices must not be silent. Read what the Jewish Voice for Peace are saying about the root causes of the violence. Thank you for listening, and may God bless all of us and keep us all safe.
Thank you. The next group will be Vaseem Iftikhar, Dr. Shandra Hassan, Arora Flores, and Ayesha Assad.
I just interrupt. Can we keep the applause down till the end so that we can get all the speakers up here that we can get in 45 minutes? So we want to make that happen as fast as we can, so everybody gets a chance to...
Mr. Vaseem, go ahead.
Honorable Mayor, dear members of the council, my name is Vaseem Iftikhar, and I have had the privilege of working with some of you as a member of the CLC Board and also in different positions. So I thank you for the opportunity to be present in front of you again. You know, the purpose of my visit today is to clarify, in my opinion, and try to bring to the perspective of, of you as elected leaders, the plight of the families who are an integral part of Waukegan. Islamic Foundation North was created almost 50 years ago, and the people, some of the people that you are in, in this room are your taxpayers. They are hurting. They are hurting day and night, and you, as human beings, all of us can realize how difficult it would be to have family members not knowing whether they are surviving, starving, eating, sleeping, children, and how, how much is this hurting? So we are approaching you from that point of view. The point that was made by our honorable mayor and other people was that this is, perhaps you are all too busy to discuss this issue. Tip O'Neill, who is, was the House Speaker from Illinois, coined a word called "all politics is local." That word is spread and talked about all over the world, that all politics is local. What happens at the federal level impacts the local level, and what happens at the local level impacts federal level. Millions of dollars going out may impact poverty-stricken counties. Money should be spent there. Now, other, from the other way around, I, we have, I can at least quote three examples where local politics has affected international politics. When apartheid was practiced in South Africa, 130 towns and cities passed resolutions, which led to legislations at the federal level. So that's one example. Second example, we all cry about Holocaust, Muslims feel the same way as other religions, and when the Holocaust money was taken by Swiss banks in, in, in New York, and there were bonds open to allow those banks, those banks were betoed by local authorities, that resulted in the federal government stopping that. Likewise, when Burma had the genocide issue, Massachusetts and San Francisco passed resolution at the local level, which resulted in whatever the outcome was in terms of stopping...
Thank you, sir. Dr. Shandra...
So, so my point is, you need to have local impact.
Dr. Shandra Hassan, thank you. Thank you, Vaseem.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Shandra Hassan? Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I was in Gaza this January as part of a medical mission with four other doctors from Chicago. It was not the first conflict zone we have been to, Ukraine and Syria, but what we witnessed was post-apocalyptic. It was cold, dark night, exodus of people wandering without food, water, any place to stay, disabled people, men, women, children in wheelchair. Now, the next day, we were placed in Nasser Hospital, Khan Yunis. January was the, one of the peak seasons of that fight going on there. We thought we are going there to help with the medical mission. We thought we are going there to help with the medical mission. There's a four-bed trauma bay. We received like 12 to 20 patients, hour after hour. There was no respite. Our back to the wall, we tried to intubate patients. We are doing amputations without anesthesia. We witnessed people dying with blood loss we couldn't control. So soon we realized we are not there to help them with a medical mission. We bear witness to a massacre. It was going day on and, day and night without any respite there. And one of the days I still remember, none of us know the effect of American bombs. I almost fell off when I'm operating on a patient because they bombed a building across the hospital and the shock waves shook the building so much and waves go through your body. So the children don't stand a chance to resist that. That's why we see so many children dead without any single wound in the body because their internal organs get ruptured. So we were moved to Al-Aqsa Hospital after 10 days. The children with burns, burn of their face, full face. This is going to affect not only them physically, but rest of their lives. They have dropped over 75,000 bombs in a small strip of land, 25 miles long. At the widest part, it is seven miles. Rafa is half the size of Istanbul Airport. There are 1.5 million children. 600,000 children are starving. They're either wounded or sick. Every two-year-old child in Gaza now weighs like a newborn child. Every five-year-old child, less than five-year-old have lung infection and diarrhea. Had all the cities across the world passed a resolution asking for ceasefire, in this Holocaust momentous day, we wouldn't have lost six million of our dear Jewish brothers and sisters. So you are elected to uphold human dignity and justice and it is our money and our weapons that's sustaining this genocide. You have a duty to stop it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Aurora Flores? Aurora Flores?
Truthfully, I wish I could be good by expressing my raw anger, but I fear this city already perceives me as violent for simply showing up today. So let me make my pain a little more palatable for you. It's very disheartening that our county and city felt that our presence here today required employees to be sent home early and police to monitor the situation. The situation is me practicing civic engagement by attending a public meeting for a city that I live in and pay taxes to. I have come here peacefully today, carrying only my voice and my beliefs. It's also disheartening to see that a ceasefire resolution discussion was not placed on the agenda after your constituents called for it to be. That was a bare minimum ask. While we typically think of power from the top down, each of you was gifted the power you have to sit above us on these seats by the people of Waukegan. When you were sworn into office, it became your duty to represent us with the power we've given you. You work for me and I'm asking that you discuss a permanent ceasefire resolution as part of the agenda for the next city council meeting. While the mayor publicly expressed she feels our city has no place taking a stance on what many, including resigned United Nations officials, historians, and even some survivors of the Holocaust have defined as a genocide, the atrocities in Gaza go beyond borders and our city has a responsibility to preserve life wherever that may be. Power does not only work from the top down. Change happens from the bottom up. And while I can't directly speak to President Biden and demand he stop using billions of our federal tax dollars to murder innocent Palestinian civilians, I can speak directly to you all. The city of Waukegan passing the symbol of solidarity could trickle up, showing our county board, congressional district, and the country that they can also assume responsibility to take action. Over 100 cities, towns, and villages across the U.S. have made a symbolic stride and this so-called city of progress will only regress if we don't join them. Although our mayor publicly expressed that this city already has enough issues to focus on, respectfully, if her constituents can't rely on her to address the intersecting issues we bring to the table, then she may not be fit for the title. While what's happening in Palestine may seem far from home, the hatred embedded into the bombing and murder that we're complicit in has seeped into our community. The U.S. has seen a rise in anti-Muslim and anti-Arab sentiment in the last few months. And though I myself am Mexican and part of the majority Latina community in Waukegan, I'm also Muslim. And I felt the coldness of my community members in recent times, including from you and expecting us to cause unrest today. If you don't wish to pass a permanent ceasefire resolution for the protection of my Palestinian siblings, then at the very least do it to protect me, your constituent. You can't argue that that's not your responsibility. This is only the beginning of this discussion and I hope I'll see my concerns reflected on the agenda with the permanent ceasefire resolution discussed at the next city council meeting. Thank you and free Palestine.
Ayesha Assad. Ayesha? Ayesha Assad?
Hi, everyone. My name is Ayesha and I've been raised my whole life in Waukegan. I attended Waukegan Public Schools. So these past few months as a Palestinian have weighed heavily on me and my family. I've heard a lot of people who aren't college students talking about what's happening on college campuses. And I'm actually co-chair of Students for Justice in Palestine Chicago, which is the largest coalition of SJP's in the country. And I can tell you that what these students are fighting for is, their universities are directly investing in companies that are arming the genocide against Palestinians. And it's easy to say that this is a conflict that is far away from you when you're not native to the land you're speaking about. To support a ceasefire resolution means to condemn the bombing of universities, hospitals, and homes. It means you condemn the bloodshed of 40,000 Palestinians, 70% of whom are women and children. It means you stand with the community of Palestinians who've ran businesses and sent their kids to school in this city for decades. I implore you all to stand on the right side of history and support a ceasefire resolution. I couldn't help but notice we're situated right here on Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue. And what was Martin Luther King known for? For fighting for equality, for humanity. And we glorify him now in our history textbooks, in our classes. But back then, while he was fighting for those rights, he was criminalized by the government. He was criminalized by these institutions and arrested for doing what's right. Universities today pride themselves on their students who stood against the war in Vietnam and who stood against apartheid in South Africa. And today they censor pro-Palestinian students and continue to fund the Israeli genocide in Palestine. This hypocrisy throughout history has shown us that we must stand on the right side of humanity before it's too late. This didn't just start on October 7th or October 6th. And I'd like to remind you all that there was no ceasefire on October 6th. This has been an ongoing violent settler colonial project since the Nakba of 1948. And I am a result of that Nakba. I'm a, I am a member of the Palestinian diaspora, which Chicago houses the largest Palestinian community in the United States. In Chicago, the third largest city in the country, we were able to pass a ceasefire resolution back in January after mobilizing by the thousands in the streets of Chicago since October 7th. Today, our home city of Waukegan has the opportunity to do the same. Voting against a ceasefire resolution means that when a life is lost and the woman looks like me, it does not matter. But if it looks like the people who are speaking in opposition to me, it does.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Last speaker before the break. Last speaker before the break. Sayed Karim. Last speaker. Last speaker before the break. Sayed Karim.
Good evening, everybody. Dr. Amos Goldberg, who's a Holocaust and genocide scholar and professor of Holocaust history at the Hebrew University in Jerusalem, wrote one week ago, "Yes, it is genocide. It is so difficult and painful to admit it, but despite all that and despite all our efforts to think otherwise, after six months of brutal war, we can no longer afford this conclusion." End quote. "Genocide doesn't happen in a vacuum. It is invariably preceded by racism. Colonialism all over the world has been justified in white supremacy. Israel is no different. The illegal Israeli occupation is predominantly by white Europeans of the indigenous people of Palestine. Once again, it is white people oppressing brown people." Israeli racism is indeed multifaceted. Israel was an active supporter of apartheid in South Africa. In 2012, it was discovered that Israeli authorities were sterilizing black Jewish women from Ethiopia against their knowledge for years. In 2019, there were riots by tens of thousands of black Jews from Ethiopia to protest the deplorable condition they live under. So it is no surprise that the same racist state justifies the murder of over 40,000 innocent brown Palestinian men, women, and children, the average age of the dead being five, as collateral damage for the goal of exterminating Hamas. Because had Hamas burrowed into Tel Aviv, we all know that Israel would not have leveled Tel Aviv the way it has leveled Gaza. The racism has also been on the, on full display from Israel's protectors. Black and brown countries all over the globe have called on Israel to stop this genocide, while the so-called civilized U.S. and white European countries have cheered on the genocide, all except Spain and Ireland. Because after all, what's a hundred thousand dead or maimed Palestinians? Because being civilized simply means eating with a knife and fork and killing thousands in one blow. But from a distance, being civilized means that your hands don't get dirty with either food or blood. In the U.S. also, those supporting genocide have been overwhelmingly white and supporters of ceasefire overwhelmingly black and brown. The college protesters have been the exception, where students of conscience have been of every faith and color, where the counter protesters supporting Israel have been exclusively white. The Guardian described one situation as, quote, "The scene evoked memories of the resistance to the civil rights struggle in the U.S. South six decades earlier." So why should this body adopt a ceasefire? Because Waukegan is a black and brown town. Because Waukegan knows oppression when it sees it and Waukegan does not tolerate racism. And because you represent Waukegan, because you should put your humanity and your identity and your politics. Another reason to support a permanent ceasefire is money. Since the war began, we have given Israel 40 billion to continue the genocide and that's going to come from minority communities like Waukegan with a 9.5% unemployment rate.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mayor, that's your 45 minutes for the first half. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, can you turn us to speak?
Um, no, we will, we've already. Sir. Because we have so many people, we need to do the business of the city. We will give people a chance to talk at the end. No, we will go on. Sir, if you don't stop, you need to leave. We're going on to the business of the city. Okay. Consent agenda. Can I have a first and a second? First.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Second. Second.
Is that for the consent?
Can I also suggest we dismiss with reading each one? Can we do that? Like, so we don't have to read all? We've read them in committee.
Right? Do we have to do that? Yeah.
A through A through H in the consent agenda, I'll make a motion to approve it as a consent agenda.
Okay. So we're going on to the consent agenda now. We're going to do it as quickly as we can so that we have time afterwards. Okay. Item A, yes, I need a first and a second for the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion for the consent agenda.
Okay. I have a first, I need a second.
I second it.
Okay. Alderman Bolton. I'm going to read them in because we want to save time. So, um, can I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk, for items A through H on the consent agenda? Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez. Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donna Worth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no reports or communication, old business. A motion to approve the, or I'm sorry, can I have a first and a second on the motion to approve the closed session minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donna Worth.
Aye.
Florian.
No.
Hayes.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item B, I need, well, do we have salary ordinances for all of these or not? Or any?
There, there is a, there's a salary ordinance that has been placed. It basically tracks the same numbers as the one that was approved in June. And once again, no changes are effective until the next, until the next term begins. However, no changes can be made within 180 days. So if there's a desire to make a change to the salary ordinance, it needs to be done 180 days before the beginning of the next term.
That is when? August, since the election is?
No, it would be, it would be six month, what? October would be the last time to change the compensation of the citywide officials from what is put in the ordinance in the packet right now. But you do need to adopt something today.
We can amend this ordinance, right?
Yes, you could.
Amend.
Okay. I need what you're amending to.
Okay.
Can we make, can we make a motion to vote on the ordinance as drafted? Can I make a motion to vote on the ordinance as drafted?
As amended? We have what was voted on back in May last year and then it was rescinded by Alderman Guzman. So we, can we vote on, take it back to the original amendment? I mean, take it back to the original proposal?
So what was proposed in May of last year would have increased the city clerk's salary starting with the next term to 94,000, the treasurer's to 26,000. It would have also added a 2% annual increase to the base salary, starting with the next term. Once again, this does not affect the current term. And then, um, the, I, I believe that that is the only substantive change.
Okay. And then can we have an understanding why this came back if it was voted down the first time? Rescinded?
You have to adopt a salary ordinance every year because that's what your ordinance says. So this will keep coming back every year unless you decide to change your code.
And that's what is coming up on the committee of the hall?
This is a full agenda.
This is a full agenda. This is not on committee of the hall.
No, I, I understand that part, but that.
Oh, I understand what you're saying, a change in the, the code. That, that has been discussed to, to basically remove the need for a salary, for an annual salary ordinance.
So clarify for me now, this one that we're, that's proposed here is to keep everything basically the same?
The same as was adopted in June, which kept basically things as they were prior, which is the $80,000, uh, sorry.
$80,720.
80,720 for the treasurer, 22,000. Mayor, 118,502. And also removes the 2% annual increase.
I second Alderman Hayes' motion to.
Okay. So that, that is a first and second to adopt the ordinance as proposed, which reflects what was adopted in June. That is, that is the, that is the ordinance on the floor.
I'd like to amend it.
And I would like to second it.
And a second, so that has to be voted on first, right?
No.
No.
We have a first and a second. We have a motion on the floor. That motion can now be, that motion can be amended.
Okay.
I'd like to make the motion to amend it to the 94,000 base salary for the clerk's office. Cemetery admin stifened to 4,000, expense account to 6,500. And I think that that is a full-time position and that clerk's office hasn't had a raise since 2012. But I look at it as that position deserves an increase. Hasn't been increased in 12 years. I mean, well, yeah, 12, 12 years. Cost of living has gone up. And if you don't put any value on yourself and what you can produce, who else is? I, I think that office deserves. I think that office deserves an increase, and that's my statement. I second that.
You have, you have a motion to amend.
And I'll second it.
Well, I think, I think that Alderman Bolton, but I just want to, I want to clarify. So, Alderman Newsom, you're suggesting raising the city clerk's salary, once again, starting with the next term, to, from $80,720 to $94,000, and increasing the monthly expense account to $541.67, which annually comes out to...
Yes. The annually amount is four grand?
Hold on, I'm going to confirm.
You're talking about the expense account?
The expense account.
Oh, $6,500.
Yes. $541.67 times 12. $6,500.
Yes. And then the treasurer, that will roll in there with the treasurer?
The cemetery admin. The cemetery admin has already been adjusted, because what it was shifted, it was shifted from the parking administrator to the cemetery administrator. So basically, it's just, there was no net increase in the compensation for that. It was just one duty was moved over.
Okay. Does this include the treasurer's pay that was voted on last year in May as well?
So, the...
All three, and the mayor's office as well?
The mayor's office did not change base salary, although the mayor's office would be subject to the 6%, the, sorry, the 2% potential increase annual.
I, I, I think that should happen. And I think there should be.
I agree.
And I think there should be a 2% increase annually each year. I don't see a problem with that. Everybody else get a raise.
That's right. Cost of living.
What's fair is fair, I think, too, also.
All across the board.
12 years is a very long time.
So does everyone understand the motion, the potential motion to amend?
Sorry. Turn on your mic, sir. The only one not included is the mayor.
And I think that should be a 2%, didn't you say, Mr.?
But are you changing the base salary then, or, I mean, I don't, I don't know what, there's so many different things going on here.
Wasn't it proposed last year, the 2% for the mayor's office as well?
I can read to you what, what...
So are you doing the 2% in addition to this? He needs to understand.
No, this is the base salary for the first year.
And then the second year will be 2%.
Okay.
And then each, each year...
So we're changing the base salary for only the clerk's office, or the treasurer?
The treasurer's office, too. The treasurer's office.
The mayor's or not?
And the mayor's office as well.
No, no change to the base salary in the mayor's office.
We haven't changed the base salary.
Was there a 2% in that one?
There would be potentially a 2% starting after 2025.
There should be a bump in that one, too. I mean, if we bumping them, we, I mean, everybody else outside, every community, everybody gets a raise, at least the cost of living raised.
For, we can, we can do this, and I, but what would you, we could also prepare an ordinance for the next meeting that would actually put this all on paper for you?
Okay.
If, if, I mean, that, so you can actually agree on what you're talking about, because I'm trying to...
The increase for, I'm talking now.
Go ahead, I know.
The increase for the treasurer's office was to 26, you said?
Yes.
The treasurer's office, that was from 22 to 26?
I can, I can go in order, I can go in order through the changes from the last meet, from the, from the June, or from the original ordinance that was adopted last May.
What is the, what is the mayor's salary, $118 base?
$118,502.
And that one hasn't been increased in the same 12 years?
I don't know how far back that goes.
Edie, it's probably worth, Alderwoman Newsom, it's worth noting that the mayor manages 520 people, approximately. The clerk's office manages, I think, three people. So if you're going to raise the clerk's salary by a certain percentage...
16% or 17%.
16,000 or $17,000, we should probably look at the mayor's salary.
I don't have, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
And ladies and gentlemen, remember this. This is the start of raising your property taxes, because they're giving 16, 17%, plus a 2% raise every single year. So remember that when somebody says, "I don't have a problem giving these people raises," because eventually, the piper has to come, somebody's got to pay the piper.
Don't you get a raise every year on your job?
But, but, this is an elected position.
That doesn't matter.
People will run, no matter what.
The job is being done, the job, the work has to be done.
The people will run for this job. I guarantee you, put this position at 50,000, people will run for this position, because they want power.
They want more police, too. They want more police, too. And that's what you're going to pay for.
And you're taking it away from them.
For the rest of their life.
Everything costs money. Every salary costs money. Mayor, what do you want?
So guess what, that $245 million next year, you'll see, $255 million. Where do you think that money's going to come from?
You can come back with...
Because they're going to come at you, and they're going to come at you for more property tax increase. And you know what? I tell you right now, Alderman Guzman will vote no every single time.
Mr., uh...
Okay? And this is what it is. Let's give any money I want, I just give any raise you want.
Okay, we're coming up with a...
Mr., can you come with those numbers at the next meeting, so we can vote on this?
So...
With the increase in the mayor's salary?
We, we can bring, we can bring a substitute, we can bring a substitute ordinance that you can amend, reflecting those numbers, if you'd like, at the next meeting.
For the treasurer's office, the mayor's office, and the clerk's office?
Basically taking it back to what was adopted last May.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Alderman Newsom, are you asking them to hold this matter over, then?
I, to come back, yeah, with those numbers. Will, it will be on the agenda, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And we'll be able to vote on it. Thank you.
So we're going to hold that item over, item B, until the next meeting, and then will be voted on one way or the other. Alderman Guzman?
I just want to say one more, one more thing. Okay. Public Works, it's one of the hardest department working here. Not saying that no other department is working. What did your department get, Director Garland, what was it, 12% or 13% over four years? If I remember correct, contract? No, 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 no. I'm talking about the employees. What was their contract negotiated at?
12%.
12%. There you go. 12% over four years. Four years. Okay? Four years. And we're deciding to give a director of a department 17%? Or whoever becomes the next city clerk? And then on top of that, we're giving the mayor more money? And that, they're just not telling you the whole thing. They get the $80,000, plus they get the stipend, plus they get the cemetery money. What is the actual money that they get a year? So it's not $80,000. So what is the actual money, Stu?
We already told you that.
I told you, $104,000.
But I think this has been held over. Let's just do this at the next meeting. You can vote up or down at that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
But there's already been a request made. Okay. Under new business, does anybody want to make a motion to do an omnibus?
I'd like to make a motion to do an omnibus.
And I move we don't read them either. I second.
I'd like to make a motion, read them as an omnibus without reading of detail, except for items, I'd like to pull out items of S and T.
I would like to pull out item N also.
What was the item?
N.
Are we voting on the changes for the, what do you call those? The mobile food carts?
That is N.
That's N, okay.
And out.
Pull that one up, please.
Okay. Okay. So, we're looking at omnibusing for items A through M, O through R, and that's what we'll vote. And I will not read each item, so that we can move this quicker. Okay. Is everybody okay with that? I need a first and a second for omnibusing items A through M and O through R.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Turner and Newsom. Okay. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item N, I need a first and a second, and then we'll do discussion.
Aye, so move.
Second.
Alderman Guzman and Alderman Turner. Okay. Discussion on the mobile food vendors.
Okay. Mayor?
I'm sorry, Alderman Guzman.
Thank you. Okay. So, mobile food vending, okay, so I, it's been, it was difficult at the beginning, and I had, I was skeptical about the whole thing. And it was correctly, that I thought of, because, you know, they're not paying property taxes, they're not paying anything besides their, their business license, and then only their, only their, their fee, their permit fees. So I'd like to keep them only in the designated areas that were assigned to them, not all around the city, or anywhere in this, anywhere that they please are to ask. If they are going to be put on a certain place, they should be required to, to, to apply for a permit for something to be there, yes, because it cannot be going on a constant basis over and over and over again. Anytime you have a food vending, food vending, if you want to do something, you have to apply for a permit. Okay? So if you want to put it in front of, I don't know, wherever.
This is to be on a private property, so, private property.
This is on private property, so if you hired a food truck to be on your property at, like, say, at your home, or if it was in a parking lot that a vendor owned, or business owned and wanted to have a food truck on their property that was not selling, but, you know, able to accommodate them, that's what this is. Chief Bridges, do you want to come up and verify all that for him? And I think we've gone over this in aldermatic briefings, but...
It should only be put into the areas that were approved, nothing else.
I, I didn't get the full question, but I do, this ordinance takes them off of residential property, but if they did decide to go, let's say, to, I want to say Builder Square, but People's Choice, if they invited them there, they would be able to sell the way this is written, they would be able to sell to the general public, but they cannot sell at your residential driveway, they could not sell to the general public.
As I understand, as we spoke of earlier, with the exception that you could get a special event permit? Yeah, special event permit. So if I want to bring an ice cream truck for my ice cream social, I do that. Every year I have ice cream social.
Right.
This year, if I want to bring an ice cream truck and park it in my driveway, I would just need a special event permit, permission slip to use my own property where I want to, right?
Again, I don't want to mix it, or confuse anyone. If you are not selling food, then you can have it at your event. That is a special permit that you would get to have that event, as long as you're giving the food away, and they do have to have the county, no matter what, if you're giving food to the public or anything like that as a business, it has to get a Lake County license to serve. What I feel like the alderman is asking is that residential, this ordinance does not allow them to be on private, private residential property to sell their product. It does not prevent a public approval of private property. That's the reason why I gave you the example of People's Choice, that is a strip mall area. If they said that, hey, you can come on my property, it does not prevent that, because they do have permission, and they will be selling to the public.
Exactly.
And could I, could I make one clarification? Right now, the food, food trucks, to Alderman Guzman's point, we don't want food trucks in residential neighborhoods, like parking across from parks, because they might be competition to other, to the park district's vending. We don't, we just generally don't want that. Right now, there is a loophole in the code that they could pull into a driveway and sell from the driveway. That's all we're trying to do. We're trying to close that one loophole. That's all we're trying to close.
I have a question. What about the loophole, or is there a loophole, to sell in the parking lot of a plaza, I guess? I would say where?
This ordinance would allow that, Alderwoman?
But I don't think they should be able to, because you have other restaurants across the street, you have other sandwich shops in the plaza that would take away from their business.
I would refer this to Corporation Council. You would have to amend the current ordinance to restrict that.
We're not here to protect people from competition. This is the open, free market. These people are being licensed and, and, you know, you got to go through all these hoops to do business.
Alderman Turner, you know where we get our...
You can't do business, because somebody might want to buy a sandwich across the street, but you might entice them, no.
Alderman Felix hit his hand first.
Alderman Turner, you know where we get our money from?
No.
Property taxes.
Alderman Guzman, I'm calling on Alderman Felix, because he was next.
I, I do agree that, so, it's been like, a little bit over two weeks that downtown, now, we, I get to see some feedback of, of what we passed so far. They're losing a lot of business downtown. So, you know, I would definitely like to look more into this, and maybe look at where we approved where they're at. But I know, I know we're talking about different things, but I've been getting feedback now that, you know, this is affecting some of the businesses there. We need to kind of re-strategize where we're allowing under public areas downtown.
I can get you a copy of the designated areas. I can get you a map.
Yeah. But besides that, to what Alderman Newsom is saying is that what we can do, I mean, we just start thinking about, like, different solutions, is what we can do is, if they don't have a license to have, to sell food in their property, like, for example, a restaurant, maybe we can use that to, to say, well, you know, only where they're, only to be, to allow them in designated areas. Something along those lines. I mean, I know, I know what you're, what the concern is, that you have, you don't want eliminated competition, but, you know, also, as Alderman Guzman said, we have tax-paying businesses here that, you know, they, they do their due diligence to get a brick and mortar, and also, you know, we need to help them as well.
Okay. Can we just hold this over, then?
I'm for voting that, though. I mean, you know, the private property, I mean, I think, I think this, this is okay.
I think we want to close this loophole, right? Just to avoid any potential...
Yeah, we should close this loophole, and then bring it back. Can we vote for that, then amend it? Amend to...
Well, okay. So the question is, do you know what, how you want to amend it, or do you want more feedback from staff and more information? Because you can close the loophole tonight, and we can revisit this later.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Is everybody okay with voting on this ordinance as it's put right there?
Can I just say one thing?
Alderman Florian?
It does kind of annoy me that, as a property owner, I will have to get a special permit to have an ice cream truck, but People's Choice doesn't, and I get what we're trying to do, I totally understand, I don't want them selling out of my driveway, but you, I don't think you were in the room, Mayor, but for my 50th birthday, I had a food truck come to my house and do my party, now, if I do that, I'm going to have to pay for a permit to do that, but People's Choice doesn't have to pay for one.
Exactly, my-
Winter, and I can't, I can't remember if they were in the driveway, or if they stayed right in front of this, it was like, 20 below that day, so nobody was outside, we were all inside, it sucks having a February birthday, but that's another story.
Chief of Staff, do you want to?
I just wanted to clarify something, from the statement that you said, I fixed it, I think, Ron. Um, I don't, I hope I didn't confuse anyone, if you are having that social in your driveway, and it's only, it's free, and it's for all of your patrons or constituents, you don't need a permit, I don't think I said that.
Didn't you say earlier, Stu, I did?
You know, I have to talk to licensing about this.
Yeah.
I was very focused on closing this loophole, and not a wider discussion, I'm happy to come back and talk with licen, and we can present with licensing generally how these would work.
Okay. Correct. It's a private event. Yeah, you're giving it away.
Okay, so, I need to know a consensus, are we holding this over, are we voting on this?
Should we vote on it?
Vote on this.
Let's vote.
Did we have a?
But can we, can we amend it later to, to address the other issues where somebody can be invited in a parking lot to sell, in front of another restaurant?
If you'd like to put that on a future agenda, possibly on a committee of the whole, where we can discuss it, that would be fine.
Okay.
I do want to, I just want to make sure that we have, we have a first and a second on this motion.
I'll make the first.
No, we have it.
We've already got it.
We've got Guzman, and what was it, who was the, and Turner.
Roll call?
So, can we do a roll call, then?
Please.
Yeah, let's do a roll call, Madam Clerk. Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
No.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donanworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item S, can I have a first and a second, and then we'll do a discussion? I need a first and a second on item S. Alderman Newsom, who's my second?
Second.
Alderman Donanworth. Okay, discussion, Alderman Turner, you brought that up.
Yeah, just firstly, before we discuss, I'd like to know what this is, it just simply says concerning use of the police firing range.
Yeah, it's Advocate Health doing, just renewing their-
Advocate Health is going to get free use of the range, or they renting it from us?
Chief Navarro, can you come up and address that, please?
Hello, so, yeah, there is no fee, what they want to do is, come to our range to qualify, and when they, when they're having their annual training, we're not, we don't charge them a fee, we're not charging them a fee, but they, I know there is an IGA that you may have read, we're, we've been networking with them, so, we do have very good communication with the hospital, our co-responders are scheduled to meet with them, most of their personnel, if not all, all the ones that I've met, they're all retired police officers, that's what they're starting to use, they're armed people, they're all, that I know of, all retired police officers, so, we've established very good, a lot, a lot better communication with the hospital that we utilize frequent, and they assist us in, through our investigations.
That's where all the gunshot wounds go.
That's where all the gunshot wounds victims go to.
And that's their security.
Right, so I have a problem with this, because here, again, we are setting ourselves up in competition with the private sector, right, so we have a commercial gun range right over on Washington Street, and this is, this goes back, I mean, I guess it's the same kind of thought processes, is when we give Chamber of Commerce $10 per year for two years, plus internet access, when we give money to 501(c)(3)'s, when we act as landlords for the building over on that nightshade and dark, so we are, we, the city, the government, is in competition with private industry, with the free market, and we can always undercut them, and so here, here we are, giving away what they would have to pay for if they went to a private range, so I-
Alderman Turner, I do want to clarify, there is a fee, it's $1,200 annually, whether, I mean, I'm not saying that that's an exorbitant fee, but there is, there is a fee that is built in.
Yeah.
I apologize for that.
And that's okay, Chief, I understand.
We don't, and they bring their own equipment, so they don't use any of our equipment.
I understand, but-
They bring their own bullets, yes.
But we, the taxpayers, pay for facilities, and property, and tools, and all of those things, we pay for that for city employees, for the city's business, we're not, and should not be, in the business of renting space, renting our facilities, in direct competition with a, a, a commercial business, so I would recommend that we refer them to whatever that gun range is over there on Washington Street.
Can we call the question?
I don't go into that gun range, but-
We can vote no, we can call the question.
Yeah, let's call the question, please.
Call the question to item S. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Nope.
Donanworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item T, I need a first and a second, and then we'll do discussion.
Some of.
Alderman Newsom, I need a second.
Second.
Was Alderman Donanworth. Alderman Turner, were you the one who?
Yes, yes, ma'am, and again, I'd just like to know what this is about, it just simply says concerning trespassing, code of ordinance is concerning trespassing, what is that?
Yeah, I'm absolutely happy to explain this, so the ordinance, the changes are in Exhibit A, this is a, this is an instance that arose from the fact that Illinois has a program to help problem gamblers, people who have, who have determined themselves that they have a gambling problem, and have put themselves on something, it's called the self-exclusion list, it's a program that allows folks who have struggled with compulsive gambling to basically put themselves on a list that they are not allowed to enter a casino, and if they somehow get into the casino, they're not allowed to cash out winnings. It is a voluntary program, a judge can't make you get on it, your mom can't make you get on it, your wife can't make you get on it, your husband can't make you get on it, it is something that you have to do yourself, once you're on it, you're honored for five years, and every casino is required to enforce this, if they do not enforce this, they can have their license pulled, so every community that has a casino in it is required to, has to deal with this issue, there are folks who, notwithstanding the fact that they have voluntarily put themselves on this list, and know it, will go into a casino because they are unfortunately compelled by what is a, it is a sickness, yeah, and when they go in, most of the time, when the casino says, you're on the self-exclusion list, you need to leave the premises, nine times out of 10, they do, that one time out of 10, unfortunately, we do get calls, and I wish I could say that one time out of 10 didn't happen very often, it happens pretty frequently, and so, when we get, when the police come, often at that point, the person will leave, there are times, though, when they will not, or while they will get to the corner and walk right back, and one of the issues we had was that we could not actually write a citation under the way our code was written, it's a criminal citation, the state's attorney could write these citations, they've got their hands full across the street, American Place, to comply with what they, what they have to do to keep their license, has basically asked us, in certain cases, to be able to write a ticket, we were writing tickets based on the way our ordinance was, judges were kicking them out, they said, this, your ordinance is not specific enough, and we need more proof, what we're basically putting in here is, is that if you are in the self-exclusion list, and you walk into a casino, you are judicially determined to have created a trespass, it basically takes away a lot of the extra testimony that we have to provide, and most of the time, we don't even end up writing these tickets, but when we do, we have to have this to be able to actually take it before a judge.
The question.
No further questions, roll call, please. Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donanworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk, there being no ordinances, alderperson's time, and then we will go on to additional audience time, okay. Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I want to thank the community for the first ward meeting, I got a great response, I want to first thank our staff, thank you for all your work, thank you for your attendance, our police officers, I want to especially thank Sergeant Josh, I want to thank the Barwell Community, our executive director, the regional manager, I just had such a great turnout, they were standing outside, and just, all the vendors, all the agencies showed up, I am just so grateful, also, we had a resource fair, that was a great turnout, we had a great cleanup week, the dumpsters, we had, it's so full, I think some individuals had to be turned away, so I can't wait to list that again, we also had a voter registration in the first ward, that went really well, we're going to do that again, also, there was a scholarship fundraiser at Illinois Merkey, at this College of Lake County, if you know a young person that needs a scholarship, please call me at 224-607-8445, and hopefully it's not too late to submit that young person for that scholarship, also, the lead piping project is almost done, we're looking at another couple of weeks, thank you, my residents for cooperating, also, there was a wonderful turnout with National Day of Prayer at the Waukegan Library, it was great to see our church community come together, also, don't forget that Public Works is hiring, also, the fire department, so if you know someone that needs a job, make sure you reach out there, also, if you want to see all my pictures, I have about 500 or more pictures of every event, every move I make, it's Alderman Dr. Sylvia Sims Bolton, on Facebook, you can reach me out there, and don't forget, once again, it's Mental Health Awareness Month, remember, you are the product of your most dominant thoughts, so you become what you think about, also, early, we had early voting, also, happy early Mother's Day, start now, thank you, that's all I have.
Alderman Guzman.
Okay, good evening, I want to start off with, most of us should have our, okay, I'll wait for Corporation Council, okay, he's back, so, I want to start off with, most of us, actually, all of us should have, should have had our alderman meetings by now, so, I want to put a motion in to start discussing casino money, to move it around, we were waiting for, after the budget, to try to move this forward, so, I want to put a motion in to go into closed session, to start speaking about the casino money, where we're going to move it, or what we're going to do with it, to get this closed up by the end, by at least fall, or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, allocation of funds is not an available topic for open, for closed session.
Okay.
However, you know, you could, you could designate a meeting to pick back up the discussion about the revenue allocation plan.
Yes, because my next was going to be for closed session, discuss and finalize, close to finalizing, continue our discussion for the police station, fire station three, and water to the west, on closed session.
So, you can make a motion, or when the mayor gets back, you can, guys can agree on a special meeting to discuss the revenue allocation plan, which seems like, I don't think you want to put this probably behind everything else on Committee of the Whole, so you could-
No, 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 that's why I want to-
When she gets back, possibly finding a special, a date to do a special meeting.
Actually, I would like a closed session meeting, for finalizing, or, I would like to finalize the police station, start talks on, renew talks on fire station three, and starting talks on water moving to the west.
We can-
So, that's what I'd like to put a motion in, to go into closed session, for those-
Right, to go into closed session right now?
No, 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 no.
Okay, so, for a future meeting, so-
Correct.
You would like to suggest that we have a meeting to discuss revenue allocation plans, and then at a future meeting of the City Council, that we have a closed session discussion to revisit property acquisition for the-
For the police station, figure out what we're going to do with fire station three, and then water to the west.
Well, not for wa, you don't need that for water, I mean, if you're talking about property acquisition, that is an acceptable closed session topic.
No, 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 water to the west, what are, what are we going to need to move, to sell water to the west?
Yeah, that's not a, that's not a closed session, that's not a topic, we can discuss further.
Okay.
If there's an aspect of it that's appropriate for closed session, but as a whole, that would just be something that would be appropriate to discuss, in general, possibly as part of the revenue allocation plan, because you would need to spend money to do that. Mayor, just while you're gone, Alderman Guzman would like to call a special meeting of the City Council to continue discussion of the revenue allocation plan, which we began discussions with, you can either, you could either have a motion right now, or you can coordinate a time with the aldermen together afterwards.
Yeah, I think we should coordinate a time, because we already have a special meeting on the 23rd, so, I would suggest we put that into June, I mean, we've been talking about this since last August, so I think we can wait till June now, but just to be fair to those that have jobs in the evening, that, let's, let's move that to June.
Yes, so we could, we could get rid of one of the Committee of the Holes, and then you just use that for just this type of discussion.
Well, Committee of the Whole won't be until the next June meeting, so, whatever that first one is, we'll do Committee of the Whole again, and then we can do a special meeting, if you'd like, in June, in between the other two meetings, if you want to do that.
That's fine.
Why don't we put some dates out, because I need to clear, like, with staff, what works, so we'll send you that in an email, so we can pick a date for that.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay. Now, last, what was it, I think it was two, two meetings ago, we, we talked about committee chairmans, and, and before that, we spoke about how they were actually appointed, okay, the belief was that the mayor appointed, and the City Council approved, then we found out that that was not true, so.
You will be getting one at the next City Council meeting, that I'll propose one to you, I'm already working on that now.
Okay, sounds great to me, we can move that forward. Okay, let's see, so, last council meeting, we approved a $245 million-plus budget, the largest that's ever been, that's ever been done, it's a lot of mechanisms, a lot of spending, but just remember, just because you approve a $245 million budget, that doesn't mean that's what you're going to spend, that's why, that's what you budget for, so that's why every time they come, and they go to these committees, like financing, or they go to Public Works, or government oversight, and they ask for a police car, or furniture, or whatever it is, and then it's up to the alderman at that time to vote this in, and then, by the end, that's what you should come up with, 245 million, but that doesn't mean that you're going to spend 245 million, it might be 240 million, you just don't know, whatever comes up, but you just try to budget it, so you could come under budget, so I know a lot of people are like, well, 245 million, but it was explained, and, you know, things will come up, little by little, and then we'll go forward from there. Last thing I want to say is, okay, we, we got, I was elected for the second ward alderman last June, before that, but my first day was June 1st, for the year progress, I've been very vocal about a lot of stuff, and that's what the second ward lacked, it, it wanted forward-thinking, it wanted people to start, the alderman to be more active into all aspects of the city, so, I think it was a learning process throughout the year, what could be done, or what can't be done, I think there's more to learn, I mean, we go meetings twice, twice a month, and it's just, it's, it's a huge process, it's government, it's not easy, and it's just not one person who makes the decision, you have to have a majority of five, certain things, you have to have a seven-person approval- You have to have a majority of five, certain things, you have to have a seven-person approval. So, it's, it's a very slow, slow, slow process. And then, then when you vote on something, then certain people don't understand, and then you have to bring it back, and, I mean, there's a lot of back-and-forth stuff, so. Saying that, it's been a progressive years, and hope to keep going forward. That's about it for me. Thank you. Have a good night.
Alderman Martinez.
All right, thank you, Madam City Clerk and Counsel. I'll be brief. First, I'd like to thank all the constituents and the guest speakers that were at our first ward, third ward meeting. It was well-attended, and resident related to me that it was good information shared. The way I conducted it, the way we conducted, it was like a town hall meeting where we had different special guests come in, talk about their department and their progress, and how they're giving back to the city. I do want to thank my sponsors, Drippin' Culture, for the coffee. It was, it was great, it was very tasteful. And also, I'd like to thank Deanna Sweet Treats for the tasty cupcakes that she offered us. Special thanks goes out to the Waukegan School Constodians, who really were very helpful in assisting and setting up and offering support, as well as cleanup. Thanks to all the guests who attended and spoke at the event. Special thanks to State Senator Adrian Johnson, Lake County Treasurer Holly Kim, Waukegan Township Supervisor Mark Jones, and of course, our own Mayor Ann Taylor. So, I just want to, want to thank everyone for showing up. The feedback was great, and I look forward to having more of these town hall ward meetings, so. I also want to thank, on the subject of the Waukegan school system, I do want to thank the administration. I do see that they're doing a much better job as far as controlling when the children, when the students are coming out of the school. At any given time, you've got almost 2,800 people coming out, but they do have two new crossing guards that they didn't have before. And I have seen a lot of Yellow Jackets out there, security out there. So, it is a work in progress, and I do make sure that I pull over and I thank them, and I talk to them, and, you know, so much more needs to be done as far as the pickup and the traffic that accumulates there. But I do, I do see that they are trying their best and try to be proactive in this, and I commend them for that. I also attended the special ceremony and dedication of the Memorial Garden for the four men that were tragically killed at the AB Specialty Silicone Factory, almost five years ago. Although it was a somber occasion, I pray for the families of the victims, many whom I spoke with at the event. May they all continue to rest in peace. The four that were perished in the fire were Ellen, Byron, Daniel, and Jeff. My heart goes out to the family. Also, I will be hosting a Neighborhood Watch meeting for the Tiffany Drive residents. But I also want to invite all other residents who inquired about wanting more information on establishing a Neighborhood Watch program. I do have Officer Luca involved. We are planning, it will be on a Friday, it'll be 6 o'clock. But I do invite all of my constituents who are very interested in wanting more information on obtaining or having a Neighborhood Watch. That's the only way we can control the crime. We need to know who our neighbors are. All right, and so therefore, there'd be more information coming soon. It will be maybe later on, at the end of the month, but I will let all my constituents know, and I will post something on Facebook. But I encourage all residents, you know, whether you live in my ward or not, to really get involved, get involved with your neighbor, know who your neighbors are, and, you know, establish a Neighborhood Watch program. I mean, I'm not saying that it's 100% effective, but what I can say is that crime in the Tiffany Drive area has gone down tremendously. You have to know your neighbors. The police can't be everywhere at all times, all right? So, I encourage again for everyone to partake in that. Also, it is the rainy season. Please make sure that your subpumps are working, all right? We get too much rain coming in at any time, so, again, I encourage everyone to get your basements checked, make sure your pump, the subpumps are working, because I know that that could be a fortune trying to get it fixed. So therefore, just a heads up that, you know, the rainy season is coming. I also, it was National Small Business Week last week. I did a few visits, I did visit some of my establishments in Mike, in my ward. They are the backbone of our economy, so please make sure we solicit them to support the small businesses. Trees, when a, when a resident wants a tree knocked down, there is a protocol and a process that we have to take. As much as I want to knock that tree down and, 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 and agree with you, we, we, we have to send an arborist out there, a professional from the city, who determines that the tree needs to be taken down. I get a couple of phone calls, people saying, "I want my tree down." Well, I just want everyone to know that there is a process. It starts by calling me, I go out there, I take pictures, I send the information to our Public Works and our Arborists, and then from there, they determine, they get back to me and let me know that, hey, it could be savagable, we'll trim it, or we will go ahead and completely knock it down. Okay, I just want to let my constituents know that. Also, let me see, that's all that happened now, the tree, okay, that's just about it. I just have, if you need to get ahold of me, my number is (847) 390-2689. And more than ever, after such an uneventful night, I ask all my neighbors to be safe, be mindful, and let's all be a good neighbor. Good night.
Alderman Felix.
Thank you. So, a few things that I want to bring up, a lot of things. One of the things that I, that I do want to say is that, as Jose was saying, Alderman Guzman, is that it's been a year so far in office. It definitely has been a learning experience. We cannot definitely do it alone. We need each other to help each other out. There's a lot of good professionals working for the city of Waukegan. But over the course of the year, we have managed to do a few changes. Of course, if my constituents come to me, I'm gonna give them a landing ear, you know, I'm gonna hear them out, and I'm gonna see what I can do. I'll bring it up, I'll bring it up to all over council. Whether it be popular or not, whether it be easy or not, our job is to be there for all of our constituents, all of Waukegan. So, over the course of the year, I think I am better now. You guys are starting to see certain, more, more work, us working together. And part of that is, you know, us talking to each other, but you're, you're gonna start to see better change, and then the mayor herself, she cannot do it all by herself. You know, we, I'm a thinker, I'm a problem solver. If I, if I see that there's a problem, I'm gonna try to fix it and see if there's different ways to do that. So, you know, it keep coming to me. Of course, I have to have in the backing of my colleagues, but also, I also have my own voice, and I'm here for my constituents. One of the things that has happened in my ward is carjackings. There's a lot of cars being stolen, and it's sad, you know, you have, you know, every age, every age, 16-year-olds where their first car got stolen, grown people, you know, having their car stolen. It's sad that we, you know, and sometimes it's not people in our community. But I did talk to an insurance agent, you know, reached out to a friend, she said, you know, for sure, you know, at least right now, I mean, it's not a recommendation, but it's good to have full coverage. If it gets stolen, you at least don't, don't have a total loss, right? Especially if it gets, you know, if it gets crashed onto. One thing that I did want to bring up is Chief Bridges, if we can let the people know of what happens if your car gets stolen, and it gets abandoned. In terms of our, our end with the tow company, could you let them know, like, what, what the process would look like? Hate to put you in a, on the spot, but, you know.
I'm gonna bring the chief up, sorry, I want to talk to, I'm gonna bring the chief up to explain that process.
Can you repeat again the entire question?
Yeah, so, if a car gets stolen, right, and then, two weeks later, it's found crashed, and, you know, the, the owner didn't, wasn't aware. When a tow company picks it up, should they be charging the, the owner of the car? For towing and for storage?
So, when a vehicle's found that was abandoned, and it does so happen to be a vehicle that was stolen, what the police are going to do, we're going, and man, we need to know that the vehicle was stolen. You'll be surprised. Sometimes, we don't know at that time, there wasn't a report made. But if that vehicle was reported stolen, we're going to contact the owner. And the owner has the option to come and retrieve the property themselves, or have the city tow it on their behalf, if they decide not to show up. The tow company has to get paid for the tow. So, if they decide to use our service, we, the tow company is going to charge them. And if they don't make it to the tow company within the allotted time, they do get charged the storage as well. But the owner has the option, right up front initially, to take care of the tow themselves, or if they would like for us to do it. Many times, this is an insurance-covered event anyway. So, I would like to think more times than not, the owner isn't out of money.
So, if our designated tow company picks it up, that means that we're, they're asking for us to take care of that for them, in that moment?
If there was a stolen vehicle that was abandoned, either the owner selected for us to tow the car, or we couldn't get ahold of the owner, and we had to secure it. That, that's the only way it would make it to our tow agency.
And they're gonna charge the owner? Okay. So, I thought it was where they shouldn't charge, they should only charge the insurance. Not, if they can bill the insurance, they would do that, but if they can't, we wouldn't charge them. That's, is that not true?
They're actually, they're actually billing the car owner. And then, if the car owner has State Farm, or also, whatever that insurance company may be, the insurance company ends up picking the tab up, or reimbursing the owner. But the owner's the person who's actually billed, not the, not the insurance company.
Okay.
So, if the owner doesn't have insurance, then it becomes their bill.
Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying. Definitely, the community does need to know, especially with a lot of carjacking going on. Thank you.
It's a difference between carjacking and car theft, just for a note.
Is there?
Carjacking is when somebody puts a pistol on, jacks you out of your car.
Oh, both?
Just when they break into your car and steal it.
Okay.
It is an unfortunate event that our community faces. If there's any other information you need, please reach out to us. We'd be happy to assist and help.
Thank you. I do want to say, if you go to the fourth ward right now, if you drive down Butrick, you go on Yeoman, the streets have been done, so I want to thank all of our staff, engineers, Public Works, that's been working with other company. If you can, you can easily drive through there now. You don't have to worry about messing up your tire. So, thank you guys for all of your hard work. If you guys go into the fourth ward, it's a lot cleaner than before. You can drive through there without worrying about your car getting messed up. In terms of the, what someone stated about the landscaping company, I asked George Bridges, you know, Chief of Staff George Bridges, like, "Well, why can't we get someone locally," right? It's just, people don't know how to apply for these contracts. Because they can have a company, but if they don't have all of the, what we're needing, they don't win the contracts. I would, I would love for the fourth ward to do fourth ward, you know? That way, if something happens, we can easily go knock on their door, not their actual door, but, you know, their business, and let them know what, what's going on. Sadly, not everyone is, you know, has the right business set up where they can take these government contracts, which, you know, they had a fair before, and I would like to do something like that again this year, before, before we renew contracts next year. Maybe we can see what we can do, you know, help our, employ our businesses here in Waukegan. There's drainage, or there's, we're doing work in the city. You know, there's a lot of changes going on. You know, if you hear weird noise in your drainage or backup, you know, you can always let us know, and we can see, at least on the city side, we can put the snake through there. It happens before it gets worse, before it goes into your house, you know, give us a call. We can always reach out to Public Works, or our Chief of Staff Bridges, he's always pretty responsive. There's people sometimes that have, there's residents that are not responsible with picking up their own trash, unfortunately. So, you know, you guys can file like a nuisance, I believe, you can, you can do like a nuisance thing where you would be able to get the city's attention to go out there and talk to the, some of the residents that are not being responsible with their, their own property. Because sometimes, there's people that are not responsible with their property, they have garbage all over the place, and it flies to the residents, and unfortunately, sometimes people feel, you know, frustrated, because they feel like they can't do anything. Reach out to us, that way we can make sure that we, you know, we talk to our, our people in the, in the city. This last thing that I wanted to address, thank you guys. You know, the Palestinian community, the Muslim community, Jewish community, I thank everyone for being here, you know? I don't want to see, say, seem like you're not being acknowledged. You guys are here. You know, I do wish peace and love for everyone, of course, you know? And you guys are our constituents, and, you know, I'm here for you guys. If Aseem reached out to me, and to see if we can do this resolution. You know, it's not, it's not always an easy topic, because sometimes we're not, we don't know everything, right, on our end at least. But I want to say that, you know, you're as a resident, thank you guys for coming here, for giving us your time. You know, I wish love, peace for everyone, and for us, at least here in Waukegan, to work together to, to, you know, even work to give this an aid, or whatever, we can work together, you know, at least here, locally. And, you know, may God be with you guys, with everyone in our community, and, you know, just want to let you know that you guys are acknowledged. You guys, thank you guys for coming here and being here with us. And that's all. Thank you.
Alderman Newsome. Alderman Turner.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor, tonight you introduced the two new department heads, and I was a little taken aback that normally, we vote on approving department head appointees. And can you, why are we not voting, you know, with council approval to appoint the department heads?
The council approves department heads who are officers of the city, who are officers of the city. So, the Director of Dispatch is not an officer of the city, and I do not believe that the Director of HR is either.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, and it's a, you could ask me why certain people are officers of the city, or not, and I'll tell you that's what's in the code. I don't have a great explanation.
Thank you, Stu. All right, just a comment. I was contacted by a couple, three people, I don't remember how many it was, but at least two, that had liquor licenses that, that expired. And both of them were like, you know, isn't there a grace period or a late fee? And I think that, I mean, clerical errors happen, things happen, and I think we should have like a, maybe a late fee and a grace period beyond the hard expiration date. So, if it expires on April 30th, I mean, you're just making them shut the door. I ask you to consider that as commissioner, liquor commissioner, please. All right, so, several months ago, we passed a resolution. We had a lot of talk about this. It was very contentious, and we did pass a resolution regards Alderman having access to information, and the resolution said, "Hey, if you ask for it, you get it." I was locked out of GovQA for many months. And I didn't probably able to get back in there, I just verified. But I shouldn't have to go through GovQA to submit a FOIA request, because we passed a resolution, says, "Hey, I can get what I want." So, one of the things that I have asked for, and I have yet to receive it, is I would like to call run logs every day for the police and the fire. Now, I used to get, we used to get the significant incident reports, and that was, you know, I would share that with the, with the, you know, on social media. Everyone was very enthused about it. People have a thirst for knowledge about public safety in, in our community. But that was on December 6th. I did that for like five years. And then, on December 6th, that was canceled, no more. Can't tell the people what's happening, and that's why we don't know. So, what I would like, ideally, I would like to get those reports back. But if I can't have those, then I would like to have the police call runs, and that is simply the report of somebody called, "Hey, I need the police over at 1320 North Jackson Street." And what the call was about, and that's it. So, I'd like to get those daily, as we did, used to get the significant incident reports. I requested that information, and I've never gotten it. Can I get it?
Why you locked yourself? I mean, we've never locked
I'm talking about GovQA. I'm talking about the police reports. Every day, each shift runs a number of calls for the Every day, each shift runs a number of calls for the police and the fire. How many people called 911 and asked for police assistance?
I will talk to the legal about it and then we'll get back. Something that's decided here.
You're the mayor. Number four. It's springtime, obviously, and we're cutting our grass again, yippee. Please don't put your grass clippings in the street. For a motorcycle, it's like glass. It's like riding on ice and glass with oil on it. It's, I mean, it's super slick. Please pay attention. I was, not this past Saturday, but last Saturday, I was at the stop sign at Genesee and Clayton, right by the Genesee Theater. Young lady ran, I was on a motorcycle, young lady ran right into the back of me. And I gotta tell you, I'm not scared of much, but that really scared me. I was shook when I got off that bike. So please pay attention. Also, remember to bring, and I, everyone forgets from time to time, but you gotta bring your garbage cans back from the street once they're emptied. If you put your garbage can out there late and it doesn't get emptied, you don't get to leave it out there all week until the next garbage day. You gotta pull it back. I go around the sixth ward and I pull them in for you sometimes. But we need to be more cognizant of our neighbors and our neighborhood. A little follow-up there on what Alderman Felix talked about. Remember to not leave valuables in your vehicles and to lock your vehicles, excuse me, every night, even if they're in your yard, in your garage. People come in, they came in my garage, so, got in my wife's car. I do, I would like to acknowledge Shannon Cisneros from the Public Works Department. Shannon is extremely knowledgeable, detail-oriented, thorough and totally professional. And I know Chris leans on her and she is always there in, in every, I, I can't think of anything. I can ask her and she doesn't know. So kudos to Shannon. Chris, please let her know. And then I wanna say goodbye to Director Guzman. He's leaving the Waukegan Police Dispatch. He retired as a deputy chief and then picked up Director of Dispatch. And now he's moving on. I wanna thank him for his many years of service in the city of Waukegan. Finally, Alderman Donanworth and I are gonna host a free, say it, free pizza party on eight, uh, uh, what is it? The 15th, May 15th is next Wednesday, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at the Quonset Hut, Pizza Hut, Quonset Restaurant, over there. Anyway, this is for the graduating class of 2024, Waukegan High School 2024. So if you have students graduating, let them know about it and parents are welcome too, okay? And so, that's you and me, right? All right. Thank you. That's all we have for tonight.
Alderman Donanworth.
There's gonna be a lot of pizza. Hi, first, of course, I always thank the staff and the employees of the city of Waukegan. Cause, you know, being an Alderman up here, everything comes in at all different hours of the night. And nine times out of 10, I try to give them a call in a decent hour. And they seem to take care of it for me. They get right back to me. They advise me if they can do it, can't do it. And I wanna say, I just wanna say, oh, there we go, thank you. And we had our dumpster dive and we had a whole bunch of trash thrown away. It was fantastic. People were able to see it cause it was up in the corner of, right at Bowen Park, at the corner of Sheridan Road and Greenwood. The city was out there all day, kinda helped us out and we loaded, I, I believe, two dumpsters. And I think they came through and they kind of unloaded one half of it. And then, basically, I just, I, I agree with everybody that everybody has, you know, the right to speak and you have the right to be heard. So, you know, speak away, you know? And that's it.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I wanna thank everyone that participated in Earth Week. Fifty-six tons is amazing. I do wanna reiterate, I look forward to the day when we don't have to pick up trash off the ground, though. We've gotta get people to stop littering, so we don't have to spend time picking it up. I also have talked to Chief Bridges about trying to get recycling available at the dumpsters. I know we take in tires and electronics that ultimately, I think, get somewhat recycled. But I've seen people come with 40 or 50 boxes to the dumpster. That, that could go in recycling instead of in the landfill. So if we can work with LRS to get recycling available alongside the dumpster to prevent some of that. I was lucky, we had a, a man show up who was a scrapper and he kept a lot of stuff out of the dumpsters, we did. And at mine, we, we emptied it five times. And some of the stuff didn't even go in because we knew it was just gonna get taken right out, like some big furniture and stuff. So I wanna thank Chris and his staff for helping make that happen. It was great and very well appreciated by my residents. I also wanna talk about, in the eighth ward, we have pads as purchasing a hotel along Lewis Avenue in my ward to have a permanent residence for women and children that are, are experiencing homelessness. And that's in, that's in process, so I'm really excited about that happening. And then there's also, I got a call last week. There's a house, there was a house in my ward that had been abandoned 20 years. You can imagine how horrible it was. We finally got it torn down about a year and a half ago, almost two years ago. And now Habitat for Humanity is gonna build their first house ever in the eighth ward on that property. So it's gonna go from a home that was abandoned for 20 years and was just a horrible eyesight to a brand-new, affordable home for a family. And I couldn't be more thrilled. So, anyway, that's, that's the exciting news from the eighth ward. Thank you.
Alderman Hayes.
Pass.
We'll now go to the remainder of the public time.
Can I just make a couple announcements real quick? Director Garland, are we still doing the animal control building this Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. So for those of you who don't know, 4:30, the ribbon cutting.
It's a long night, baby.
4:30 on Thursday, the new animal control ribbon cutting building will be opening. So we invite the public to come. And for some of the Aldermen, Wake Up Waukegan is tomorrow. There are still, I think, three or four vacancies that you can attend. I really wanna get to the rest of our speakers. So, Madam Clerk?
Yes, the next five will be Frank Pettis, Daniela Nunes, Yasenia Reese, Margaret Carrasco and Christine Wilhelm. Frank Pettis, Daniela Nunes, Yasenia Reese, Magga Carrasco and Christine Wilhelm. Go ahead, Mr. Frank.
Okay, good evening. My name is Frank Pettis and I'm a resident of Waukegan, went to the schools here. This is a city of immigrants, many of whom came to this city as refugees, displaced from homelands by violence and oppression. My people also came here from the South in the 50s, escaping life in the South as sharecroppers. I'm here today to urge the council to add to its docket a resolution demanding an immediate ceasefire, immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. Add it and then educate yourselves before you vote on it. We, we need an immediate ceasefire and an end to the illegal occupation of Gaza and Palestine. Please, please, do your part to stop this carnage. Join the dozens of other cities, including the city of Chicago, in your calling for a ceasefire. Far too many people, far too many of us have been given false and unverified information designed to justify the brutality being waged against the Palestinian people. This conflict did not begin on October 7th, despite what we heard earlier in the evening. The state of Israel has been illegally seizing Palestinian land and building illegal settlements for more than 75 years. Since 2006, Israel has been enforcing a total blockade on Gaza. Gaza has been on the brink of famine since then. A 2020 report by the UN Human, the UN Human Rights Council showed that famine, that over 79% of Gaza's water was undrinkable and that the people there are being slowly poisoned by the contaminated water they are forced to drink. In 2018, the UN issued a report saying Gaza could be uninhabitable by 2020. And it's 2024. What if that was Waukegan? Right, we can't drink the water out of our taps, we can't eat the food, we ain't got no food? What are we gonna do? Gaza is the world's largest open-air prison. Why concern ourselves with Palestine? Because our tax dollars are funding this genocide. Over 34,262 innocent civilians have been killed by Israeli bombs since October 7th, of whom 70% of them are women and children. I fear that if we don't force action, we will be trapped in a never-ending cycle of violence and despair. Put this in context, how does history remember apartheid in South Africa? The American War in Vietnam? The genocide of indigenous peoples on this land? Today is Holocaust Remembrance Day, right? The most powerful testimony I've heard on this issue have come from the survivors of the Holocaust who warn that their people so traumatized are going to reproduce that here, okay? I just want you to remember that no enduring order, social order can be founded upon the innocent, the blood and bones of innocent kids. Thank you.
Daniela Nunes.
Hello, my name is Daniela Nunes and I am here to read a comment on behalf of Jordan Asparza-Kelly, who couldn't be here tonight. Dear Mayor Ann Taylor and Waukegan City Council, I write to you today as a nearly lifelong Waukegan resident and passionate community advocate. As most of you know by now, there is an act of genocide being committed against the Palestinian people by Israel. Nearly 40,000 people have been murdered and tens of thousands more have been injured and displaced. Unfortunately, America is providing funding and weaponry for this to be carried out, which is why this issue becomes important for Waukegan, an American city. This is not to say that we don't have other municipally domestic issues that need to be resolved. It's saying that our hearts are big enough to tackle them all successfully. Humanity is the core reason why we as a city need to pass a ceasefire resolution. But it isn't the only one. Let me explain why this matter is relevant to us here in Waukegan. As Waukegan, the self-proclaimed city of progress, looks to the future, it will be imperative for us to build economic and diplomatic relationships internationally. Waukegan is a city with unlimited and untapped potential. We are a port city via air and sea and fixated in between two of the largest Midwest cities, Chicago and Milwaukee. Putting our votes where our humanity is will give us a voice in the international community that lets the Arab and Muslim world know that we acknowledge their pain and support their efforts to survive. Waukegan consists of a majority of ethnic minorities. Most of us are Latin, but there are many others as well. We must tell our citizens and the world that Waukegan is a city of empathy. Waukegan is a city that stands for justice. Waukegan is a city where you and your loved ones can and will be accepted. Then we must look inwards and apply these values to the fullest extent every single day in our own city. Calling for a ceasefire is exactly that. It is not antisemitism and it is not supporting terrorism. It is a call to stop the bloodshed. I know that you will find it in your hearts to make the right decision for the people suffering and for Waukegan's future. Thank you.
With the remainder of my time, I just wanna say some things on my part. There was a lot of comments saying that this issue wasn't of importance to us, but with weapons manufacturers so close to home, it really is. And your voice as people who are elected matters. Thank you.
Next will be Yasenia Reese. Yasenia Reese. Yasenia Reese. I believe she left. All right, Ms. Magga Carrasco.
Good evening. Number one, in regards to the Lake County, I mean, excuse me, to the landscaping contract, Arizmundi Landscaping attempted to apply. They, five times, emailed and phone called, not one response. So it's a scam that's going on. They prevent you from applying. The next thing is that Alderman Guzman, you keep saying that people don't apply for the committees. That's false. Because I have a text message from George Bridges where he says, you can't apply. The next thing on the city website, why is it that you cannot share the information, get it out into the community on many of the posts? Lastly, Tom Hayes, Jose Guzman, when you send an email to you, it bounces back. I don't know if it's the computer system, whatever. Mayor Taylor, you're in violation of Open Meetings Act. It's not mayor's time, your time, it's not your time to speak. Thank you. The next thing is that I received a lot of information and from city employees. So I started digging, investigating. And it was in regards to George Bridges. And it came out that, and I have here documented, that he's listed as the owner of Custom Exteriors. Okay, fine. Then I checked with the state of Illinois. And it does not list Custom Exteriors as a legitimate business in the state of Illinois. So I checked on his economic statements, interest statements, and it's not listed on there. So what's going on? So I filed a FOIA request asking for the permits for building and demolition for, from Waukegan Park District, Waukegan Public Schools, any permits with the contact, personal, person's name is George Bridges, the last name Bridges, Tammy Schneider, Tammy Bridges, or Custom Exteriors, and many, many more. Permits with seven different emails and 18 different phone numbers tied to George Bridges. Business application license bond for Custom Exteriors, checks, manual checks, reimbursements, credits issued, we, you're gonna get surprised on that. Detailed credit cards for PayPal purchases for George Bridges. The next thing, any employee complaints against Ann Taylor, George Bridges, Bob Benz, all, any for sexual harassment or bullying. Any manual checks signed by Don Schultz or requested by George Bridges. And the last thing is fires and arsons. Alderman, you need to ask George Bridges, did he at any time order a building, a structure that had asbestos to be burnt down or demolished? Lastly,
Thank you, Ms. Magga.
Stop the killing in Palestine. Don't use our money for that. Thank you.
Christine Wilhelm.
Hi, my name is Christine Wilhelm and I'm here to talk about some code enforcement that is going on. Can I show you some pictures? You guys can take a look. It is actually going from my street, which is a dead-end street, all the way into my driveway. So you can kinda see what I'm talking about. So again, my name is Christine Wilhelm. My husband and I are here today. We moved into our home in January of 1999. We purchased the home from Frank Flamini. And there was a picture, the MLS picture of it, showed a large 40-foot motorhome on the property. We met with the owners and they said they had poured the concrete on the side yard to park their camper. And it was okay. So we have a small, as you can see from the pictures, tiny little camper. So we thought, this is great, we're gonna buy the house, we'll put our little camper there. We don't have to put it in the mud or anything, it's hardly, you can see it. But what happened is, this year, we did receive a code enforcement, I can't remember who it's from, what comp, what department. But they did say that it would be a fine if we didn't move it. So we did take it to my dad's house and we parked it in the Grudge. Well, my dad has passed, he was 96 and it's all good. So we have to bring the camper back to the home. So we have enjoyed this camper since 1989. We've refurnished, refurbished it, totally, it's a beautiful camper. And it saves us a ton of money on hotels. So I'm asking you, if you could please look at these cases as a case-by-case subject, or whatever you wanna call it. So, case-by-case basis, that's what I meant. And I'm hoping you can make an exception for us because it's a tiny little camper. And, and that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for listening to me and thank you for all you do.
Well, if you could just look at it maybe case-by-case, or look at your other town surrounding it, they allow that kind of stuff. So why is Waukegan different?
Yeah, we're gonna change it.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's up for vote. We're wanting to change it too.
Did you, did, are you done, Mr. Wilhelm?
Yeah.
He's done? Okay. The next group will be Ms. Hernandez, Ahmad Hamadhan, William Coleman, Parker Adams, David Power. Ms. Hernandez, Ahmad Mamdan, William Coleman, Parker Adams, David Power. Did Ms. leave?
He's gone.
Okay. So, Mr. Ahmad, Hamdan, go ahead.
Is Ms. Hernandez gone?
I'm sorry? Okay, let me, go ahead, sir.
All right.
Say your name.
Yeah, my name's Ahmad. I'm a Waukegan resident for over fourteen years, grew up here, went to high school, everything like that. I wanted to start off by saying just two things, honestly, and you guys are all aware of the news. A lot of our fellow Waukeganites have talked about what's going on over there in the genocide. But one thing that I wanna point out, oh, sorry. One thing that I wanna point out is that we're concerned citizens. We came to engage with our council members. And honestly, I'm a little disappointed that the amendment was made to honestly table the issue till essentially two hours later. So please, whenever this does come up in future meetings, don't table the audience. We're engaged. And while some people have accused that the people here were from outside, those were all my neighbors. I live in the ninth ward, in your ward, and those were all my neighbors, all those people. There's nobody that I didn't recognize. So that's number one. Number two, what I wanna focus on is what was requested from you by the opposing side? They requested that you, people that are a diverse group of council members and very intelligent people, I'm sure, to stay out of this issue, 'cause it's out of your depth. Stay out of it, 'cause it's none of your business. They're silencing you. And I think that's honestly highly offensive. Not only do I not wanna be silenced, I don't want the leadership that is in charge of my tax dollars, that's in charge of our city, to be silenced. And I'm sure that I wanted to emphasize that that was what was being requested. So I encourage you all to do your own research. Go ahead, look up what's going on. Read multiple sources, read all the sources. And consider the ceasefire resolution, but consider it on your own merits, on your own information, on your own knowledge. Whenever somebody comes here and asks our leadership to stay out of it, 'cause it's not their purview, I'm sorry, that's insulting not only to you guys, but to me as well. I am your constituent and my leaders are intelligent people that are able to form their own assessments, especially when it comes to our tax dollars. So I'm not going to berieve you guys about the details, you're all very intelligent, but those are the two points. One, next time, whenever we come, which I'm sure we will, please give us the time. We're engaging with you, please engage with us. Don't, don't do the strategy to table this or that, the majority of people leave. These are all Waukeganites. And two, do not let anybody silence you, not only on the basis of just principles of us being Americans, but also, this is a group of majority-minority people, which is representative Waukegan. So I'm not gonna stand for people silencing a minority council. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. William Coleman? Mr. Coleman, go ahead.
To clear any doubt, the genocide in Palestine is directly linked to the suffering all of us face here in this very room. If you need to understand this, please read Becoming Abolitionist by Direka Purnell, a book written by a black woman, and this book shows very clearly how all these things tie together. I also wanna clarify, clarify that a Semite is a member of any of a number of people of ancient southwestern Asia, including the Akadians, Phoenicians, Hebrews, and Arabs. So when an Arab asks to live, they're actually being pro-Semite. They cannot be antisemites. I really encourage this group of people to learn the difference between Jewish faith, Jewish heritage, Jewish culture, and Zionism. No one is saying Zionism. There is a big difference between Judaism, being Jewish, and Zionism. It's important that you learn the difference. On today, many have referred to the Holocaust of Nazi Germany as "the Holocaust," but you must understand that it was not the first Holocaust. Holocaust is defined as a mass slaughter of people, especially genocide, and we must recognize the Holocaust of Congo, black people, under King Leopold II. And according to historical documentation, between five and ten million African people died as a result of colonial exploitation. Why is this important? Because everything happening in Palestine, everything happening now, is about anti-blackness. No one wants to say that. Center anti-blackness, because black solidarity is the key. All techniques of oppression and suppression stem from the act of suppressing the original humans, the Africans, Aboriginals, the indigenous. These techniques are practiced, perfected, and shared to oppress and suppress black people. And the Palestinian struggle, the Palestinian people have always been there to show us that. They have always hyper-focused on helping us see that. So we must stand with them, we must do the work to cultivate relationships with them to understand why. Social stratification teaches us to ignore the plight of those who are lesser than ourselves. If you're not queer, don't talk about queer stuff. If you're not disabled, don't worry about what's happening to disabled people. If you're not old, don't worry about what's happening to old people. You focus on you, and that's what you heard them people say to you, but the young people are different. We are different. We're globalized and we care about each other. So I really encourage you to unite and stand together. Free Palestine, free Congo, free Turtle Island. Talk about colonization. If you need the words, please read the book, Becoming Abolitionist by Direka Purnell.
Good evening, y'all. We here all late. I didn't plan an official statement, so when I got a, when I signed up on my name, I was like, "I'm just gonna speak." I wrote a little something down when I was sitting in my chair, I freestyle, you know how I do. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our statements. I know it is not easy to have people consistently put it in your face, ways that you could show up better and show up differently. It's not comfortable. And that's okay, it's not comfortable for us to be up here talking to you. Our sorrow, our grief is not comfortable. The other day, I was scrolling TikTok and I saw this black woman talking about how she was just out with her Afro, minding her business, and this white woman from across the restaurant, like, two tables away, was like filming her, right, like watching her. And she was like, "Hey, can you stop filming me? I didn't give you permission for that." Like, this is very odd. And the lady was like, "Oh, no, it's just, you're so beautiful, you're so beautiful," like zooming in and shit. "You know, I don't mean anything, you're just so beautiful." And I saw that video and the girl who was talking about wondering if she was a zoo animal, how people interact with her as if she's a, as if she's an object, this like foreign creature. And I think about how I had known about the existence of human zoos and the history of that globally, and I recently learned that the last human zoo, which for those of you who are unfamiliar, human zoos were where they put black people so that white people could go and gawk at them and look at them and point out their features and kiki and kaka and have little snacks and stuff while they humiliated the people they were oppressing. And the last known human zoo was in nineteen ninety-four. Mind you, these zoos existed in Belgium, in the United States, in the UK, in France. And I'm thinking, I was born in ninety-four, I got two gray hairs. I have one, one in my eyelashes, one in my eyebrows. It's not that long ago. And so when we see these vestiges of oppression, when we see these lingering effects of oppression, because I, I too have been treated as an object, as if I'm not a person, as if I'm not a vessel nurturing a soul, and that is an act of dehumanization that we have normalized in this culture and not just here in Waukegan, but globally. And so I very much echo my peers who are talking about how all of this oppression is interconnected, how it should not be complicated for us to advocate for liberation, how it's not a challenge for us to advocate for wellness. And I wanna say too, not, not too much on my love life, you know, I'm a Libra, but, so recently, right, there's this musician in my life, and she asked me to move to Los Angeles with her or whatever. And I was telling her how, you know, it's hard for me because I have a lot of heart in this city. There's a lot of poverty here, there's a lot of pollution here, but every time I talk to somebody here, they're talking about change. I'm talking about the people, right? They're talking about liberation, they're talking about progress, they're talking about anti-oppression. And so that keeps the hope alive, and I want us to hold on to that.
Thank you. David Power, please.
Oh, thank you. My name is David Power, I'm a Waukegan resident. I wrote something a little earlier today, and I'm gonna read it to keep my thoughts organized. All around our community and all around this country, people are opening their eyes to the atrocities that Israel commits against the people of Palestine. Since October seventh, Israel has killed nearly thirty-five thousand people in Gaza. We've witnessed live streams of these atrocities. We've seen mothers and children blown to bits and we've seen fathers digging through the rubble looking for their loved ones. Our consciences will not allow us to stand by idly while our United States government funds this genocide and provides it with diplomatic cover in the U.N. Just today, the Palestinian resistance forces have proposed a ceasefire deal that exchanges hostages for peace. This is what we say we've wanted. But now it is up to Netanyahu's government to either accept peace or move forward with the genocidal invasion of Rafa, and they are dropping bombs on Rafa right now. Because the U.S. government plays such a large role in supporting this genocide, we can also play a large role in ending it. I'm very disappointed that the ceasefire resolution isn't on the agenda this week. I called nearly every alderperson up here, asking you to vote to put it on the agenda. Alderman Guzman and Alderman Donenworth, you both specifically told me that you were going to support the agenda item. I was also told that we needed only three votes to get it on the agenda, so either my information is incorrect, or somebody backed out, or something else is going on behind the scenes. The trust in our government is already very low around this country, but the people are gonna do what they can to make justice happen. We're organizing protests and banner drops and teach-ins in Waukegan, in the nearby communities. I was at a Libertyville protest yesterday. People in Chicago are holding massive demonstrations and disruptions. Campuses are forming encampments across this country. The people are doing everything that they can to stand on the right side of the history. So you all have a decision to make. Do you wanna stand with the people or do you wanna stand against them? So this decision to put the ceasefire resolution on the agenda and the decision to vote for a ceasefire, to vote to push for a ceasefire, to stand with us, to do everything you can as well, to stand up for justice, to stand up for peace, to end the killing, that's your decision to make, but whatever decision you make will reflect your character and we will notice. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two more speakers. Aangz Abu Sham? Aangz Abu Sham? I'm sorry, I might be not doing that correct. And Jason Farias. Aangz Abu Sham and Jason Farias. Anytime, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anas Abu Shamat. I am a local here in Waukegan. I was raised here in Waukegan. I have served this community. I played football in this community my entire life since the age of twelve. Before every football game, I would wrap my hand with tape and before I go out there on the field, I would write "Free Palestine" on it. When I would play, it wasn't that I was playing for the city of Waukegan, but rather I was playing for myself and my people back home. I came to this country when I was five years old. I didn't know much about America and I hated the fact that I had to leave my city and leave my family and my loved ones. All throughout my life, I have told people about Palestine and tried to educate people about Palestine. I've actually created a clothing brand here in Waukegan called One World to advocate for not only Palestinians, but people oppressed all around the world. My religion teaches me that we love all people, whether you're Jewish, Christian, Muslim, whatever you are, black, brown, it teaches us to love people. Today here, we come to you and we ask for a ceasefire, nothing less, to stop the bloodshed, to stop the killings. Forty thousand people have died. How do you guys go to sleep? How do you guys go to sleep knowing that forty thousand people have died? Fifteen thousand children. How do you guys kiss your children to sleep and tell them goodnight? How, how do you look into the, to the eyes of these kids? Meanwhile, there is people overseas that are getting murdered, killed, pulled out the rubble. A guy over here mentioned earlier that this problem is a small problem and that us Americans should not be worried about this problem, that a small city like Waukegan should not be worried about this problem. I think that person is very small-minded. It starts with the smaller community. Martin Luther King, can any name, can any of you guys name where Martin Luther King grew up or where he was born? Doesn't matter where he was born, doesn't matter where he grew up. What mattered is his dream, what mattered what he accomplished. And we, the city of Waukegan, the people of Waukegan, have that same opportunity. Please call for a ceasefire. Please acknowledge us. We are people. Forty thousands are not just numbers. Those are people, family members, family members, brothers, sisters, wives, all under the rubble. I want you to go home tonight and before you sleep, I want you to think about those forty-plus thousand people that have died. And I, I don't know how you guys sleep, so please call for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Farias?
My name is Jason. I'm a Waukegan resident and university student studying history education. During the course of the seven-month siege of Gaza, the world has witnessed mass graves beneath hospitals, the destruction of all twelve of Gaza's universities, and indiscriminate bombing campaigns resulting in the destruction of sixty percent of homes and seventy percent of public infrastructure. We have witnessed the bombings of hospitals, ambulances, refugee camps, the third oldest church in the world, countless mosques, schools, and even a playground that left eleven children dead. More than forty thousand civilians have been killed, the majority of whom, as you've all heard tonight, have been women and children. They've been pushed to the edge of famine. Never before has the world seen a population of 2.2 million people made to go this hungry this quickly. We cannot look away from Gaza. U.S. residents, U.S. residents bear a unique responsibility because our tax dollars are paying for these atrocities. Taxpayersforpeace.org estimates that Waukegan residents paid 1.1 million in federal tax dollars annually to fund arms to Israel, yet fifteen percent of Waukegan families live in poverty. That money would much be, much better be spent here providing for families rather than destroying them in Gaza. Thus, it is our responsibility to put a ceasefire resolution on the agenda that calls for peace, justice, and an end to arms sales to the state of Israel, which is currently under investigation for numerous, numerous human rights abuses and the crime of genocide. We are all connected to this terrible genocide in some way. Despite this, many in the room feel as though we have enough issues at home. However, we know that global politics are local politics. There's a direct relationship between poverty here and the bombing of Gaza over there. MLK said, "The bombs in Vietnam explode at home. They destroy the hopes and possibilities for a decent America." In Waukegan, we feed the war machine yet cannot eat. The city council ought to be upset with this war the same way young people are upset with this war. You ask for federal grants, you ask for public infrastructure, social services, we ask for healthcare, education, housing. Both of us, we are all met with silence from the federal government while they sign blank checks for weapons, munitions, and bombs. We shouldn't have to wait for our bridges to collapse or our peers to disintegrate into Lake Michigan before we receive some federal dollars. These global politics are local politics. Palestinian, Palestine's liberation is our liberation and no one is free until we're all free. Please consider putting a ceasefire resolution on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes the audience portion. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn? Alderman Turner, second?
Second.
Alderman Donenworth, all those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone. Turner, Donenworth?